Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th, 2023 session of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. At this time, I would ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify yourselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. And we also have none online, so seeing none, please place all electronic devices into silent mode so that we can enjoy each other's company. I am going to note that we are a full five-member board without an alternate as of right now, but we do have an alternate expected as of approximately one hour from now. I would like to start the meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask Mr. Chartern if you could lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would also like to send my good wishes to everyone residing in our neighboring towns, particularly Lemonster, that's been affected by the floodwaters of yesterday and the devastation that they have experienced because of that, and thank all of our first responders who have participated and helped people. I, of course, could be wrong because I work all day and don't notice the news until later, but I believe no one has lost their lives yet in that incident for which I'm very thankful. And I want to particularly thank everyone who responded to people who were elderly or infirm and in need yesterday over in Lemonster due to the line of work that I do at my day job. I'm certainly very appreciative of that. With that, we are going to open the meeting. And on the first matter on the agenda, I... On the first matter on the agenda, I do have a conflict of interest on which I need to recuse myself, and so I am going to rely on the very able Mr. McLaughlin to hold that first item. And I will be exiting the room and returning when it's done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, this is case ZBA 23-20, and it was an application for a use variance at 151 South Street for lodging our Burt boarding house. We, just to, you know, refresh everybody, we gave the applicant, we had pretty much heard all the information, we gave the applicant the opportunity for us to have one board member read the minutes and to vote. But as mentioned, I wasn't going to open it back up for any questioning, okay? It was just so that they had that additional member. That additional member isn't here, obviously, and we do have a letter from the applicant asking to give leave to withdraw, okay? Now, there is one thing, I did talk to Attorney Tree as well. This little unique situation where we've gone through the whole case, we've heard everything, we're ready to close and ready to deliberate, and I had a question to her, which was, once we reach a certain point during a case, are we allowed, if we decide, to move ahead and vote on the case anyways? Okay, so my question to the board is, do you want to give leave to withdraw?
Move the question.
Or do you want to move ahead and vote on how it was presented?
I think we should vote.
Okay.
Vote.
Okay, so if I could have a show of hands, how many members would like to move ahead and vote? Okay, so I guess we're going to do that. At this point, we've heard everything from the applicant, and, you know, this by no means does not disallow any future applicant to come before the board for a different application on this particular property, okay?
Providing that it is definitely amended from what was presented before.
Different, correct.
Different.
Okay, so if I could have a motion on ZBA 2023-20, and it's going to be in the affirmative?
I make a motion that ZBA 20-20, 151 South Street be put to a vote by the board.
In favor, correct?
Yep.
In the affirmative?
Yep.
Okay, all those, can I have a second, please? A second, okay. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are ready to bring back Chairwoman, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
I respectfully turn the meeting back over to you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, we're going to call the next matter on the agenda. This is ZBA 2022-26. This is at the property located at 292 Fifth Mass Turnpike, a review of the special permit under Section 181.94 of the City of Pittsburgh to keep chickens on the property pursuant to Section 181.313 in the residential B District. And the applicant in this case is Michelle Wadani. She, we have a communication from her today requesting a continuance to October 10th, 2023 due to a work inconvenience for this evening. So I'm just going to note that that's the communication from the permit holder. I think I have somebody who wishes to speak because she is standing. Ma'am, you're welcome to speak or have a comment on this. Please keep it reasonable and linked and limited to the subject matter, and if you could, give Ms. Mata your name and address so that she can note it for the minutes.
Okay, Jaclyn Wetchy, I'm a Pittsburgh resident, and I support the right of the petitioner and everyone else to raise chickens regardless of where they live. Pittsburgh is a right-to-farm community, but unfortunately, that has been interpreted to only apply to elites who own five acres or more of land. Not only in this case, but when discussing revisions to the Board of Appeals' rules and regulations, you should recognize the fundamental human right of people to grow and raise food, particularly in a poor community such as Pittsburgh and at a time of high food inflation, you would be helping people feed themselves. Many people like to be self-reliant and do not want to depend on government programs or charity as they struggle with high food prices. You should remove the barriers that are currently in place. While roosters can crow early in the morning, there should be no issue with chickens. Years ago, there were chickens in my neighborhood. At the time, I had a lawn, and I liked when they wandered over and ate grubs that would damage it. They never bothered me, and it was cool seeing them. The various problems we have in Pittsburgh come from human beings, not chickens. In 2021, Massachusetts passed a law mandating all chickens live cage-free, so you don't have to worry about animal cruelty. In the past, I understand some in Pittsburgh were concerned chickens would not be kept in a proper manner, but with the passage of this law, that is no longer a concern. Cruelty-free conditions for pigs are also now the law, but let's start with chickens.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. As you were reading, do you wish to make a written submission to the board? It's up to you, just offering it.
It's kind of messy for my house.
That's okay. Okay, thank you for coming, and we appreciate your participation. So this was a review of an allowed special permit to keep chickens, and I believe that was also ducks. Before we consider the continuance, I am going to note that I did make inquiry to the city to see if there had been any complaint regarding the keeping of the animals, and there had been no complaint made. Does any board member want to offer a comment on this review? Go ahead.
The people that wanted to raise the chickens, we made a special trip out there and saw the places that it was going to be, and we recommended that it be approved.
Yes.
Seeing that there has been no complaints from anybody in the neighborhood, and seeing that it has come up on review now, I don't see any reason we have to bring the people back in in October because it's, you know, that they're complete. It's done. So no reason to bring them back. That's fine.
Does anyone else have a comment on that? I would say that, so I've gone by this property, and I was very happy to see that there was no complaints from the neighbors. The neighbors had been very supportive of this lady when the petition was first brought forward, and she keeps the chickens all fenced in in the rear. I do see that there is kind of a different concept with her house, and I would call it, you know, kind of in opposition to the lawns-first movement. It's a gardens-first movement. It can, and she's, I think, managed to keep this in a fashion that still maintains attractiveness as a cottage-style front garden, which I like to see the mix of, the mix of some aesthetic considerations, some considerations for how it looks to the rest of the neighborhood, but still bringing in that productive food element. So on that grounds, on that basis, I would also agree with you that I don't see a need for further review, that we can approve. This does expire, I believe, with the expiration of those particular animals. So other than that, I don't see any need to review this any further.
Right.
Okay, I'd be looking for a motion on the review then.
I make a motion that ZBA 2022-26 pass the review and the applicant be notified that she doesn't have to appear for another review.
Do we have a second?
Second. Will we second?
On the motion, go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to ask if the board would like to have a sunset clause in there.
So we have no more than five and three, eight, four, three, and all. So usually would have a five-year term on this type of permit.
Okay.
We could add a five-year sunset clause where the applicant would need to renew.
I just want to make sure that down the road, as, you know, if property changes hands, and again, there's something visible that says...
So connected to this particular owner as well?
Yeah, I think that's probably the safe bet.
Okay. Would you modify your motion for the addition of such a condition?
Amended to say that a sunset clause be added to the review stating that, stating the sunset clause, that it only is for the individual that was issued, and upon sale of the property, the permit is abolished.
What about the provision of a five-year term from the original granting of the special permit?
Okay, at a five-year, five-year term on the clause, if she wants to keep it longer, she has to come back again.
Right.
In five years.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the review with the conditions as amended?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the review is approved with no further review required, but that condition amended.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a comment. Your name is Jackie?
Or Jaclyn.
Jaclyn. Your last name?
Wetchy.
Wetchy?
Yes.
Thank you for taking the time to come in. We've had a lot of applicants for chickens, and I, the board in a lot of cases has looked favorably upon it. Personally, as one board member, I think it is time for the city to look at the ordinance, because five years does seem to be quite excessive. So appreciate the feedback. Keep in mind, we don't make the rules. We're just here to hear cases with regards, but please, you know, as a resident, look into investigating some change for the city.
Okay. Since we have another nine minutes before I can call the next matter, I'll just note for Ms. Wetchy or anybody else who is interested in this issue, the rule change would need to come by a change in the zoning ordinance, and...
I don't want to give that woman any false hope.
No.
She said that she wants free-range chickens to be going anywhere, but I can't see multiv它们 having chickens.
I don't think any of us can.
I don't think so.
That's why we want to go out to each and every one and handle them individually.
But it is the subject of an ordinance change. It's not something that we can change by changing our rules within this body. It has to go to City Council.
Has to go through Planning Board, City Council, back to the Planning Board.
Yeah, so it's not something that the board can change alone. It requires an ordinance change, so you would need to seek one of those. But good luck with everything and good luck with your efforts. Okay, thank you. Now, unfortunately, we have seven minutes in which to discuss anything but a subject matter that is on our agenda, because I cannot call the next item until 6:30. The next item, however, is 447 Water Street, and I know, Mr. Mateo, you are here for that, right?
I am, yes.
Yep, so we will know that at least one person is here for...
They are here as well.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Oh, good. Nice to see you.
Everybody's here.
Very good. We were here on a review, and unfortunately, again, I can't open this until 6:30. If you had anything that you wanted to hand in or documents you wanted to pass to the board on this subject, please feel free to do that, and then we can take a look while we're waiting.
I'm here, so you can...
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right.
Come back after.
Sure. If you don't mind, we'll need you to send a copy so it can be in the minutes. Okay. Yes, sir.
While we're waiting, we get a clarification on that earlier vote, because you didn't vote to leave to withdraw. Was that a vote in the negative? Again, it's voted negative?
So remember that I am conflicted out of that matter, and so this is an abstract After we get to the point where we have closed the hearing, so there's already been a public hearing opened, there's testimony been taken, comments taken, and then the hearing is closed, the only matter left is deliberation. And at that point in time, under the board's rules, the applicant can't just withdraw the petition by right. The ZBA has a say in whether or not they're going to grant the leave to withdraw. The difference between a leave to withdraw and an actual vote on a matter is that a leave to withdraw doesn't implicate the two-year unfavorable action bar. A vote to deny a petition will result in a two-year ban on a rehearing of the same type of petition unless it's substantially different. So for instance, if I propose that I want to build a chicken coop in my front yard, and I can't for some reason, I would have to come back with something more like I want to build a shed that's over 120 square feet in the backyard too close to the boundary line. So, very different. Or I want to build a six-family, you would have to come back saying something more along the lines of I want to build a two-family, you know? So not the same relief requested twice until it's been two years. Yeah.
So no one will be able to come back to ask for a variance for a boarding house for two years?
A change in the applicant doesn't make a difference also. So if it's just a different person, that's not a change. And if I, since we still have three minutes left, I'll go further and explain that if the same thing comes back within two years, there has to be a vote that they want to, that, you know, either it's different enough that it warrants consideration, and then that has to go, because we're the ZBA, it has to go to the Planning Board for the same vote, and then it can come back to us for substantive consideration.
Mr. Burt, appreciate your...
Well, you know, I'll be leading a short class in clarifications on the zoning act soon, so.
Hopefully, that was clear and concise.
Yeah. Oh, I won't, I won't claim to be concise. I'm not going to claim that.
We'll come soon.
Okay. All right, has a copy of this been circulated to all persons?
Not yet.
Okay.
I haven't even had a tweet there.
Okay. When there's a similar matter or a matter by that, this applicant will circulate this particular thing. Okay, thank you. Thank you. If anybody hasn't recognized this by watching the meetings yet, they wouldn't run without the assistance of Mercedes Mata, who keeps us all in order and keeps everything in front of us.
Thank you for letting us.
Oh. Ah, finally. So it is my pleasure to open up the next hearing, ZBA 2022-21. This is on 447 Water Street. We are going to have a review of a special permit under Section 181.94 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to continue the business operation of an auto dealership and repair shop under 181.313, excuse me, 11 and 12, this is why you shouldn't have a soda before you conduct a meeting, in the neighborhood business district. And I believe the permit holder is here, Mr., I'm sorry, you're not Mr. Peña. Okay, welcome to the meeting. You're welcome to come up and sit at the table, please. All right.
Can we just have a translating here, Virginia?
Yeah, I was notified that you would have a translator here to help. Will you be translating as we go? I'll make sure that I pause to give you time.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is there a second recess? Because I have some information in my car I just need to get.
Okay, we're going to hold for 30 minutes. We'll be, 30 seconds, we'll be in recess. 30 seconds, we'll be in recess. All right, I declare the public, the hearing on the review of the special permit open and continued. Thank you for staying with us. So whatever you would like to say about the review, you're welcome to make a statement.
So he doesn't have any complaints or concerns. He's trying to do the best to continue the business going.
Okay, and I'm just going to note, I think this is what I said last time, I see you doing a lot of business there, which is wonderful. I, you know, hope in your business that you are successful. At the same time, there's more cars that are, than are supposed to be there, and I asked that you think about how to resolve that problem, because I would like to resolve it in a way that doesn't tamper your business. And I'll pause for a moment before I go on to the next one.
He's trying to fix the issue.
Okay, and we did get an email from Ms. Peña as well, which I'm going to read to the Building Department on the outstanding item on the special permit, which is removal of the concrete wires and signpost, which I know has been a point of contention. And she states that the status of the removal of the concrete and wire, nothing has been removed. Amari's position is that this is the responsibility of the landlord. We do not have the funds to do the work, and that you are here in her place to translate. Mr. Mateo, the property owner, is also here, and I am going to relate to the board that he passed to me just... And I am going to relate to the board that he passed to me just now a copy of a notice to quit on the premises that states that it was delivered by Constable on August 29th. And I do take this as having been, it indicates it was properly served and that terminates the tenancy as of October the first. So the property ownership arrangement is that Mr. Mateo, or I'm sorry, I don't know if you have an entity, but, yep, owns, is the owner of the property. And Amari, you are the person renting the property and running the business. So the, the resolution of a landlord-tenant dispute or an eviction is certainly not what we do here. But I, I thank you for bringing this to our attention because the kind of resolution that I'm going to seek with, with this issue is probably going to be affected by the fact that you're seeking to remove the tenants. Okay? And because this was delivered on August 29th, it will be, I'm going to guess, October the first before you are able to start eviction proceeding, if you decide to do that, if it's not resolved before then. Okay? And I'm going to pass this around to the board members if they would like to look. And Mr. Mateo, you are going to send a copy to the building department so it's part of the minutes. I asked him to wait a few minutes if you'd like to translate. Mr. Mateo, did you want to address the board as well?
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. For the record, my name is Harold Mateo. My address is 1118 Water Street in Fitchburg. I am the owner of 447 Water Street through Clearwater Real Estate Investment Group. And Amadi here and his wife are the tenants of, of the property. We have first, this post with the cement thing. It's actually the first time that I hear about that particular part of the post. I had heard about the fence and helped them out, contributed monetarily so that that portion of the right side that needed to get done, got done. And I got to make sure I stay politically correct here. So that the issue that I'm having here is outside of what I believe has to do with ZBA concerns. It is a tenant landlord. We're trying to figure out a resolution here. I've had significant issues with them as tenants, constantly paying me late for the last five months, 10 days. I mean, just today I got the rent for August. And on the 15th of this month, September is due in addition to the taxes, which is their responsibility under our lease. So I have given them about seven notices in the last six months to cure it, which is what's asked for in the lease. The lease asks for a three-day notice. I've, I've gone above and beyond not to serve them with a 14-day notice because I'm really trying to let them fix this. But it doesn't appear that, at least that they want to be serious about the lease that we signed. So this is a property where I, where I previously conducted business. And if, if I feel like at the moment they are not going to live up to the lease and I, I'm doing what I have to as the owner of the property, what I'm able to do legally without interfering in their day-to-day business. So that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Right. I'm going to ask, is there any other person? Is there any other person present who would like to make a statement on for or against this review? And if any person is online who wishes to make a statement, please raise your hand. Seeing none, sir, would you like to respond to Mr. Mateo?
Can I just translate for him? We used to.
So he's been trying really hard, I'm a witness of that, of trying to make the business work. It's, it's been struggling in the past, in the past few months, but he's, he's been trying. He hasn't seen the earnings of the business. He hasn't seen the money, the funds. I mean, yeah, that's what he said. I can continue speaking from my experience, but I'll just.
So as long as you give your name and address, you're welcome to make a statement if you wish.
Yeah, my name is Alexandra, 264 Highland Street in Worcester. So as a office manager there, I understand, you know, the clientele here in Fitchburg, it's a little different and we had to adjust to them. We offer a different type of financing to adjust to the clientele here. But we haven't seen that it's, it's not making, like the income is not making money. It's not making sense. And he is trying to figure out, even though he's just started, right? We're trying to figure out how we can continue to do business.
Okay. Thank you. It's, it's always hard when a business opens, especially in a new area, to get the numbers to work with all of the costs of starting up. I, I do hope for all of you that you find a good solution. We certainly would like to keep your business in Fitchburg. And you, you do seem to be at least having a lot of people in and out, which I always hope means a lot of business, but doesn't always mean that. This board is not here to get into your finances, you know. And like I said before, can't resolve a difference between tenant and landlord. But I do encourage you to keep talking and, and hope that you work it out. I am going to let the board members, if they have any comments on the review, make those comments and we'll pause after each comment so that you can translate. Okay. All right, Mr. Chartrand?
No comment at this time.
Mr. Gallagher?
No comment, Christine, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Byrne, do you have any comment?
I'd like to make, ask a question.
Okay. And Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Mateo? You have a notice to quit as of October 1st?
That is correct, sir.
Is there any way for these people to rectify that or will it take place on October 31st? Are you not going to take any money from them or bring them up or?
That's a very good question. Do you want me to, okay, so you can hear me or can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'm going to have you come up because although Mr. Byrne can hear you, everybody else can't.
All the viewers at home.
Look, I always want to see businesses do well. I rented to him and his wife in wanting to see them do well there so that I could step away from it and not have to do that business that I was doing there.
That would be best, but it doesn't seem to be.
It doesn't seem to be happening. And I will tell you, and I'm, I must say that there is a mechanic that does work there that does extremely well. And while the car business may not be doing well, the mechanic side is doing extremely well. And in fact, he gets enough on a, on a weekly basis where if he wanted to make the decision to pay me the rent at least weekly or in a month from the, the money that's earned there, he could. Okay, because the mechanic I place there and I know who he is and he's, he's an excellent person, doing a lot of good work. Now back to your question regarding the lease. In the state of Massachusetts, it's very, at least on the residential side, it's very tenant-friendly, right? But we are talking about a commercial lease. So upon the 30-day notice expiring, then I'll be able to proceed with the Fitchburg District Court here. I've already picked up the summary process, which will be served on October 2nd, just for technicality reasons. And then from there, we'll receive a court date and I will proceed with my eviction. I received one check that cost me about a whole lot of money because it was deposited into one of my lender's account and it was checked with no funds and it cost me about 15 grand in default fees with my lender. So I'm not really pleased about it, about that component of it and the consistent late payments.
All I'm trying to do is figure out how long it's going to be before this special permit ends. If you are not going to release their tenants as the sunset clause puts into them, gets put on their special permit.
Correct.
We don't have to worry about this anymore because we get the permit back.
I don't know exactly how long their timeframe is on their permit. I don't have a copy of it. Do you have it there?
This is, this is a special permit that expires when the ownership of the business changes.
Correct. We've, we've talked about it several times because the special permit, I will apply for it. Once they are gone, I will be reapplying for my special permit to put Reiko back there.
Okay. I think I'm going to cut to the end of what Mr. Byrne might be asking, which is we should continue this and what should our continuance be?
Maybe six months review of its existence.
Will it take you six months to get that out, them out?
I don't know. I mean, this is Massachusetts.
I would.
I really was hoping not to. This is not the direction I wanted to go in, but it's not. I've not been dealt a good hand in honesty and I'm really not cool with it.
So I would not expect there to be a resolution if court intervention is required before December the first. That would be the earliest I would think that it would be possible to complete whatever you would need to do if you do end up going that route, which again, I hope you work it out.
I do hope so as well. Really do hope so, but at the moment it doesn't look like.
So no sooner than December is what I would say.
December and then this.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to pause if you would like to translate the answer to the question or if you're all set, that's fine. Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Chair, is there relevancy with regards to what we're discussing or are we just here for a review of a special permit?
There's a review of a special permit and there's a condition that the cement and wires and signpost that's kind of cut off and, and be removed. And there's a dispute between these two parties as to who's responsible for doing that.
Right. I just, sorry, I.
I'm just going to let him speak and then you.
When we granted the permit with conditions, correct? It was to the applicant, correct?
Yes.
So as far as the board is concerned, our expectation is that the applicant takes care of the conditions as discussed.
But the owner also signs the application and by signing the application agrees to accept the special permit with conditions.
Sorry, may I see that application and my signature? Because I don't believe I sign anything. Okay.
When it is, I do have some comments for the applicant when you do.
Okay. I'm going to let Mr. McLaughlin finish and then I will allow you to come back up. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. We had a chance to view the property today. Amari? Alexandra? Just want to make sure I have names. Okay. Looks like you're doing a pretty good job getting going. Okay. There are a couple of things that are conditions that you're not quite there. Okay. Number one is, one of the conditions was to have no outside storage of automotive parts or junk. Do you need to explain that to him?
Say anything.
Okay. So I have pictures of stuff on the property that needs to be cleaned up. Okay, if you could do that, that would be great. The other thing is, the plan that you submitted, it was to have five cars for sale. Okay? And two cars for customer parking and two cars for employees. Okay? There were like nine to 10 cars that were unregistered. Okay? I'm just pointing this out because we want you to be successful. So I know that's been a question about keeping the number where it's supposed to be. Do you need to take some time to?
Really quick, that, that plan that you see there, that's the plan that I had, that I gave them so that they can use and not have to pay $3,500 doing a survey. It's actually for eight cars.
So I'm, I'm just gonna, again, I'm, I'm going to allow you time, Mr. Mateo.
So we just want to make sure that you adhere to the conditions that we agreed upon. Right? The other thing was, we weren't going to have any plastic signs or the flags. Okay, those have to come down. Okay? Now, those are the things that I saw on the property. Okay? For the most part, it's looking pretty good. It looks like you're starting to, you know, get used to the running the business. From a personal standpoint, just one thing that I viewed for you to be successful. Line the cars up, put for sale signs on them so people know that you're selling them. You know? But that's all I have. But those are some things you have to clean up.
I have a question. When you said no signs, so the sign that says, we finance, that has to come off?
We want, in the, in the terms, in the conditions, were that we wanted a professional sign on the building and no plastic vinyl banners or no banana flags. Okay? As far as other signs on the building, I believe that's okay. I'll defer to the, to the chair, but.
Just, so in other words, professional signage is, don't print something off the printer and stick it on the building. It's just, you know.
Or the vinyl signs that you hang up, you know, rigid sign. But we want you to be able to advertise to be successful. We issued you a permit so you could be successful. We want you to be successful. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mateo, I've stopped you several times. I am going to, I pulled out the original application. Can you, because I, I looked at this more closely. There's a place where on the application where the owner of the property is supposed to sign every time. Is that not your signature? Okay, thank you. Had the lease already been signed?
The lease was signed February something of, I believe, 2022. I have to go back and take a look. I, I just did one to the vice chair, Mike McLaughlin. I wanted to, I wanted to comment that the plan that you do see for parking is for eight vehicles. And I'm actually the one that paid for that when I had Reiko there. And it has two parking spaces for customers and one designated for handicap. So I just want to make sure that it reflects the correct number of cars that he has on the special permit, which I believe is eight vehicles. Can you just confirm the, does it say eight?
It does.
Okay, thank you, that's all. I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your comments and your time. Um, again, I, it, it's my general sense that there are issues here that we cannot resolve, although we do hope that you find a way to work, either at this location, work it out or at another location and that you find a way to be successful. They certainly seem to be working at it, so. Um, I'm gonna look for a motion on the review and I'm thinking a motion to continue would be nice to hear.
Uh, I'll say that. A motion to continue the hearing for ZBA 2022-21.
Okay. To its date certain?
Until December.
Okay. Of 2023. Do I have a second?
So we're gonna strike 11 and replace it with a new review date?
That's correct. I, I'm not indicated because there's outstanding issues. I want to know how they're gonna resolve.
So it'd be December?
Yeah. December 12th?
11.
No, meeting day, doesn't have the petition.
Oh, okay.
December 11th. No, that's the petition.
Last January.
So we don't have that.
Mercedes, is it December 12th?
December 12th, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the review is continued until December the 12th. Um, I'm just gonna say to both the parties that I'm going to look for the status of what is going on in the lease hold relationship between the two of you. If you can let us know prior to the meeting, that is always helpful. If you decide this is not the right location for you and you don't want to continue the special permit, let us know ahead of time and, you know, that you want to discontinue and we won't, we won't make you come back after you've exited the building. I'll put it that way. If however, as I hope you're able to work it out, we're gonna look for a resolution between the, you know, on that issue on the wires and the concrete, okay? Everybody have a good evening. Thank you. Yep. I want to give this back to you.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay. So I'm gonna call the next matter on the agenda. That is ZBA 2022-14, uh, ZBA 2022-5, pardon me. This is AG Dreamflip LLC, 8385 Marshall Street. We are here for a review of the special permit to reinstate a vacant or abandoned building as a three-family located in the residential C district. Is the petitioner present, excuse me, the permit holder? And I don't see him online either. We did receive a communication from him. Okay. And so this is dated November the 14th, 2023. This is dated today, excuse me, looking for a continuance to November the 14th, 2023. And it says last week, I'd asked for a status, last week DigSafe and Ryan came out to spray lines for locations. Besides that, waiting for contractors to give us a quote to dig and currently took attention away for a little to demo Elm Street. We are looking for an extension on Marshall Street if possible to November 14th, 2023. I am gonna note that I did notice that this is the same permit holder for 348 Elm, where we were looking for an unsafe building that had partially collapsed to be demolished and it is in the process of being demolished right now. And I'm very happy to see that.
Yeah, I saw that. I was happy too.
Yeah.
Because he took down as much as I thought he would need to for now. If he's gonna take the whole thing down, great, but the leaning part is gone. I don't know if the brick is still there. When I was there, it was there. I said to Belloc.
We had received from the applicant a copy of, I think this is the plans, um, and we've seen these before and I don't see that they've been modified because, because the last modification date was October 25th, 2022. So we've seen these all before. They are the plans for construction of the parking areas and supporting walls on Marshall. And he has also submitted, we saw this at the May meeting, um, plans for 348 Elm Street. So I think he wants us to know that he's been working on plans. I don't know that that's relative to the review today. We had been looking at the review because there was a gigantic hole dug next to the stairway in the retaining wall and wanted to be sure that at least it was safe. As I recall, the building department did go out and look at it and said at the time, which was a few months ago, um, at that time that it was safe. Before I go to board members, which I'm going to do, I'm just going to check, is there any person here on this matter? Any person virtual who would like to speak on this matter? All right. I'm going to go to board members for comment. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I had an opportunity to visit the site and disagree with the findings in terms of the hole that is still as it was. And it is a couple of feet from the landing of the stairway. And if anyone were to misstep, they're going down about 30 feet. Extremely dangerous. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Burns, would you like to comment? Mr. Shartren, would you like to comment?
Outside of, you know, I think that the applicant is taking on a lot of projects and it's slowing them all down. So he really needs to prioritize them better because this one came before, the Elm Street one ever was even conceived and there's no action. So, uh, you know, I, I want him to finish that and finish Elm Street, but he needs to focus. And so that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Reynolds, welcome to the meeting. Any comment?
No comment.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, just a little concerned about the fact that this project seems to have gone nowhere. I don't believe there's any occupants in it, right?
No.
Okay. Um, yeah, I was hoping at this point, I mean, I, I believe it was supposed to be done, but the retaining wall is wide open. Um, the front wall continues to deteriorate, which I believe we have captured in the comments, but I want to make sure that that front wall, I know we were gonna have the city go out and make some type of call with regards to it, but the more I see that deteriorate, that wall needs to be replaced in some form or fashion. And I, I agree, you know, with Board Member Shartren that, you know, we've got to get the applicant to finish Project A before they move on to Project B, you know? So that's all I have.
Thank you. I am also concerned, concerned about the continuing deterioration of the wall and the hole in the stairwell. Um, I drove by it and it thankfully did not collapse in the rains that we had yesterday. I also noticed that the neighboring property had installed a very nice retaining wall with three steps to it in the same place, providing an excellent example for what the applicant can do with that wall. Mr. Shartren, could you suggest an action that would be appropriate to prevent any public injury? I'm thinking physically blocking the stairs, physically putting a fence up beside the hole.
I mean, some kind of containment for your construction would be appropriate. It's good that no one's there, so that's great. No one's using the stairs and maybe that's why they're not moving on it, but, um, you know, there's kids in that neighborhood everywhere.
A lot.
You know, so some of them I know, so I'm like, uh, yeah, yeah, at least some temp construction fence, the hole itself, cover it somehow, some way or fill it in. And then have, I mean, they're gonna have a machine come to dig it all out, so why, why do you care? Fill it in, have a truck dump a load of something in it, fill the hole. That'll keep everybody safe until you're ready to, ready to work, but hopefully be ready to work really soon because winter's coming. And I don't see, um, I don't see being a really good idea to try to accomplish the wall across the street in the snow because one of the things we went over with him at length was where are you gonna put your snow, where are you gonna put your trash? So, um, you know, at least get the side that has the house on it, the immediate parking and I mean, at that point, maybe put somebody in there, but, um, you know, it just seems like, I mean, like Mike hit it on the head, that it's, it's just progressing very slow and the safety stuff definitely needs to get taken care of. We can't, we can't continue that, you know? That has to get fixed. So that's my only concern. I, I've, you know, the applicant does a lot of stuff in the city. I heard he was filling in as a wiring inspector, you know? I just think he's taking on too much and it's slowing everything down, you know?
So in terms of fashioning, an additional condition, if I said hole to be filled and construction fencing to be placed in front of the hole and stairwell?
Right. That, that language is good. And I don't see why they can't do that, you know? I'm like, no, that's not that much. It's a very small ask, you know?
And I think a 30-day timeline is more than enough to offer that.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's September, so if snow starts flying, chances of that hole getting filled, lessons. Let's put it that way, lessons. So, um, you know, gotta get it done. It's not gonna stay nice, you know, forever.
And then I believe this permit holder is before us already in December on 348 Elm, so it might be convenient to undertake both reviews at the same time. Okay. All right. I'm looking for a motion modifying the conditions and stating a review date.
Make the motion under ZBA 2022-05 for a continuance for AG Dreamflip for the property at 83 to 85 Marshall Street. We're gonna strike condition number 13 and replace it with review for, is it December 13?
12.
December 12, 2023.
And would you accept a condition to be added that the hole is to be filled and construction fencing placed in front of the hole and stairwell within 30 days?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, um, that review is continued to December the 12th. Get those back to you. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is ZBA 2022-14. This is 76 Summer Street. We're here for the review of a special permit under section 181.94 to operate an adult daycare service pursuant to 181 313C1 located in the Neighborhood Business District. Okay. I believe we had some communication with the permit holder. And I believe that I printed it out, but mind, beliefs don't matter if it isn't actually in this folder. Let me see if it is. Yes, yes, I did. Okay. All right. So Ms. Mata stated that on August 23rd, she spoke to the permit holder and he had stated that at that point in time, he is still waiting for the state emergency evacuation plan to be approved and signed off on by the state, which is unfortunate because that facility would of course be helpful to a lot of people. I will say I went on to the DPH website just to see if he had been added as a permit holder and that he does not appear to be a permit holder at this time. Is anybody here in person who would like to speak on this review? Is anybody here virtually who would like to speak on the review? If so, raise your hand. Seeing none, I'm going to see if board members have a comment. Mr. Byrne? None? Mr. Shartren? Go ahead.
It's just taking way too long.
It is.
Very, very unfortunate for this applicant. That is not great, you know, and out of his control 100%, so. I deal with the state a lot, so I'm used to it, but it, it's unfortunate. It looked like it was gonna be something nice to get going, so.
I agree.
Looking forward to it. I'm starting.
Mr. Reynolds, any comment?
No comment.
Mr. Gallagher, any comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. I feel it's out of his control, so I'm willing to wait.
Okay. We did have some communication from him, which is good. Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Shartren, you have some experience with this, I guess, with regards to.
The property?
Appeals dealing with the state. Is, is this untypical for things to move at?
No, no. I, I don't know what they do up there sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, so, and I, you know, who knows why, you know, the delay is that it takes the state, usually takes them a good amount of time to do stuff, so. I don't know anything about that particular type of approval, but I would assume that it should be coming any minute now and I'm sure Daniel's thinking the same thing.
But things move slower at the state level.
Yeah, unless, unless they want it to move fast, then they'll, they'll be coming to your town real soon.
Madam Chair, thank you. I, you know, there's no real negative impact to this particular case. We don't have any construction, you know, issues. It's all box.
And I did see that some of the conditions, like the improvement of the accessible walkway, I think had been done.
Yeah.
I don't want to keep bringing this permit holder back. What I want to do is have a review after they're in operations. This, I believe the special permit was issued on June 14th, 2022, and we do have that two-year timeframe that we'd be looking at and I would want them to have the opportunity to extend if they needed to do that. So my proposal would be that we consider scheduling the review for January or thereafter. We are not preventing a certificate of occupancy from, from issuing, just the review is to release our conditions. Any comment?
I mean.
Let's save ourselves a visit and go like March or something.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Little bit warmer, you know? Then you could see, we could see the sidewalks and everything over there. You know, I, I know the building inside and out, but still, I want to see his portion.
All right. I'd be looking for a motion on the, to continue the review then.
Make a motion on ZBA 2022-14 for Daniel Estefas, property at 76 Summer Street, for a review of a special permit, which will be moved to March 12, 2024. And as far as conditions, we're gonna strike seven and replace it with the new review date.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none? Going to move on to the next case. Oh, we are exactly on time. Very nice. The next matter is, I know, we should take a picture.
Now we're not on time.
I think he's allowing access outside. The next matter is going to be ZBA 2022- twenty-two dash thirty-three, um, one oh-nine Oak Hill Road. Um, I'm gonna wait a moment, but, uh, please have a seat, sir.
Yep.
This is a review of a special permit to operate a restaurant under one eighty-one three one three of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance located in residential C. And we'll just pause this until Mr. McLaughlin, um, reenters the building. Um, yep.
These two are requested to give you twelve participation in this.
Okay. Okay, we do see them on there, which is good. Thank you. Okay. All set, sir?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Cordio, please, uh, confirm your name and address for Ms. Mata, and go ahead and let us know how things are going.
Yeah, Christopher Cordio, thirty-five Genet Street, Pittsburgh, Mass., owner of one oh-nine Oak Hill Road in Pittsburgh.
All right. Um, do you wanna generally discuss how things have been going?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we have, I'm gonna say right out, it's been a couple of reviews before we've seen you.
Correct. Um, so after my, obviously my approval, um, I had to make some changes through Mr. Lorgan, and I don't know if any of you know, Mr. Lorgan's not the, uh, he's very busy, and he's only one person, so it took me a little while to get, um, some of the changes made, as in the city wanted me to their, the building department is saying that it's actually a nightclub, because we're gonna have live music, so they had me change double doors to the side of the building to have access to the second floor. So that change had to be made, a change in trusses had to be made, uh, all this had to be done, a few other things before my permit was issued. I think it was issued six weeks ago. Um, and then I got a call from Ms. Mata about, um, a site plan review. Um, I called her and I spoke with Mr. Barbadoro about the site plan review, and on our first meeting here, Mr. McLaughlin asked, um, Mr. Barbadoro if this should be in site plan prior to, um, coming to zoning, and he said, no, it is a, um, existing non-conforming building. It doesn't approve, it doesn't require site plan approval, just the zoning was the issue because the zoning lines were moved, and now it was in a residential neighborhood. Um, so Mr. Barbadoro said he would give Paula from, uh, planning a call. He since called me back and said that the site plan review, in his opinion, was not necessary, and told me that if they wanna send me the site plan review, they would have to take me to court. He doesn't see that happening, um, in no lesser terms, is, is how he put it. Um, since that point, we went to put the addition up to the left-hand side, but DigSafe came out, and the gas line runs straight there, so I gotta hold a unitil, and again, they're not the fastest at getting back to us, so they gave me a bill for twenty-five hundred dollars, which I have paid, to come and move the gas line to the backside of the building. That's why we're at a standstill. The inside's all gutted, taken care of. We had the sprinkler company in there, and he explained to me that because on the second floor, we had two different layers that we'd have to put a dry system and a wet system in. Then he explained if we take out the ceiling and do an open truss look with spray foam on the ceiling, so you could do one wet system. So that's what we've been working on. We have the second floor ceiling gutted, everything wide open, so they can get ready for spray foam, and then the, uh, once I get the price on the sprinklers, that will be the next step, once the addition's in. So once unitil moves that line, we'll have that addition up relatively quick, and then, uh, it, it will go pretty quick from that point on. But I haven't done a roof yet, because the roof line's gonna go straight across, so it makes no sense to put a roof on, to rip off part of the roof, to match it straight across. So, um, it looks like it's at a standstill outside, but the inside is all taken apart, ready to go. We're just waiting on those couple of, uh, of items to move, and they're kinda like the government. No one wants to move quick for you, unitil. So, they're in no rush, other than the November fifteenth deadline. They said we'll give you a, a date this coming week, if not the next week, to come out and take care of it, so. That's where we stand at this point. That's why it looks like nothing's done outside, but the whole second floor is completely gutted, ready to go.
Okay. I am going to go specifically through the conditions with you?
Yep.
Um, and just have you respond?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, the parking and the structure are to be constructed according to plans submitted dated December twelfth. It sounds like you're going to need to amend the plan that was submitted?
For the side door entry, yes. That, yes. So I will, um, get that updated one over to you guys, yes.
Okay.
Because they may be put the double doors in for the exit purposes.
Hours of operation, eleven AM to two AM, seven days a week?
Yep.
Um, unless otherwise changed by the license commission, who will have purview over that issue. Any condition imposed by the license commission incorporated and become part of the special permit? Have you been to the license commission yet?
No, not yet. No, not yet. I've spoken with, um, Rick Bosgarden, uh, in, in detail about it, so he told me what they expect and what they want in order to, uh, uh, grant the two o'clock license, so I have been in contact with him.
Definitely good to get an early jump on that.
Absolutely.
Parking area to be paved and striped and adequate to meet the needs of employees and customers, with two handicap parking spaces to be constructed. And I was there over the weekend. It is definitely not.
I haven't done it yet, because we're gonna be moving equipment over it, so I didn't wanna pave it to ruin it, to have to repair it again. So, that's gonna be our second to last thing that we do, is get that whole thing paved and striped, just so it doesn't get ruined. And it's an open parking lot, so people tend to, you know, park there, here and there, and you see a straggler car here and there. They've been very, very good, but you can't really protect it unless we put a whole fence around it right now, so you can only really do so much, and they don't care about it if it's not theirs, so.
Of course. Not sure that the parking lot's not gonna end up at the bottom of the hill before you get to it.
With all this rain out, you drove by this morning with one eye open, like, oh, please be there.
Oh. Um, occupancy not to exceed one fifty?
Yep.
Okay. Um, sign plan to be submitted at review and prior to installation of any signage. Am I right in thinking you're not there yet?
Yeah, I'm not there yet, yeah. Um, we'll have that shortly, because we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna try and reuse that sign and then put one sign on the roof, so.
The, um, board wants to see the sign design before you get to, so please don't install without having that.
Yeah, oh, actually, no, 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 yeah, hundred percent.
The exterior of the structure to be completely recited with vinyl, roof replaced, any dumpster to be screened by vinyl fencing?
Yep.
Okay. Clear of construction debris, dumpsters emptied regularly, and overgrowth maintained during construction. At the prior review, there was a lot of overgrowth.
Yeah, I sent the guys up there to clean it all up, make sure the back was done, yeah.
Yeah, I did see it was cleaned up this time.
Yeah, we took care of that.
So just, uh, please keep on top of that.
We'll, we'll keep up with that one.
Now, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three was the completion date?
Yep.
Um, so you're clearly seeking an amendment of that?
Please.
Uh, we only really want to have reviews when they're necessary.
Okay.
Um, and they're necessary for us at certain steps of the project to make sure something, as it gets done, is done correctly.
Yep.
Um, and you have a, you're gonna have a two-year, uh, no, you've substantially started, but you're gonna have two years on your building permit?
Yep.
At least. What is a realistic date for you for completion?
I honestly think by August of next year, we will be finished. So once that addition goes up, it's gonna go pretty quick. That's, like I said, our one holdup with the unitil, and then the inside stuff's the easy stuff.
All right. Um, and we had stated that this is a particular special permit. Did you create an entity?
No, not yet. Um, I will have that by the next meeting, though, um, in place, an LLC entity in place for you.
Not to be operated as a public nuisance. Now, we had, um, we have the April eleventh meetings in our packet, um, and there was a decision after that, and I think at the decision after that, um, which was the last review, um, and, and you were not present for, and we had not heard from you, um, that there was a request to reinstate the necessity of having a site plan review. If you'd just give me a moment, I'm gonna bring that decision up, so I can make sure that is accurate.
I think it was June twenty twenty-three, is what it says on my paperwork.
I think so. Thank you.
Yep.
There it is. Site plan, site plan review to be required in accordance with the zoning ordinance modified June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
Um, so that was modified at the, at the June hearing. Um, without taking more time than I want to at this meeting, to sit here and parse through the zoning ordinance, it's my recollection that, um, as a special permit granting authority, we have the ability, but not the requirement, to waive site plan review. Um, and there were some concerns raised at the last meeting that, um, uh, caused board members to think that site plan review would be, uh, best. Um, if anyone, if any board member would like to revisit those, we can do that. Um, I think, uh, for you, Mr. Cordio, this is a cost issue?
Exactly. It's more, I've been in front of planning recently, and it's not a, it's not a happy place over there in planning, so it just costs you more and more as they push you back further and further at this point, you know what I mean? And that's what Mr. Barbadoro had said. He said, I didn't see the need for the waste of time and money, because it is, it is the same usage as it was prior. That's why I didn't push you at a site plan review ahead of time versus zoning board, because prior to me buying the building, I actually called Mr. Barbadoro and said, hey, this is what I'm looking to do. Will I be okay? Yeah, no problem. Don't worry about it. Everything be good. Come pull the permit. You're fine. I pulled the permit, and then he says, oh, no, denied. You gotta go to zoning board. I said, Mark, I asked you this question prior to me purchasing this building, because it's a process. It's, it's money. Everything comes down to, you know, financial sense at the end of the day. And he goes, oh, I didn't realize they changed the zoning lines, because, um, the St. Joe's Club and, um, O'Briens used to sit, you know, eight hundred feet from each other for years, so it's the, he, he didn't realize it when he told me, but that's why he said zoning and not site plan. He said he didn't feel I needed both.
So I, you know, I'm just gonna say about our, our building commissioner, that, um, one thing I do know to be true about him, that is that he, you know, off the cuff, any one of us can say, oh, sure, I think that's okay.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, he will meticulously go back and make sure to check the regulations and make sure that the actual written decision that he issues is correct.
Correct.
Correct as far as he thinks it's correct.
Yep.
Which is correct almost all the time.
Yep.
So, um.
That's why when I called him about, uh, special permit, he said, let me call you back. Let me look into it, and that's when he called me back about it. So he did take his time to look into it, and he had some kind of correspondence with Paula from zoning, I mean, from, uh, planning, and then he called me and gave me that.
But then also, there's, uh, you know, time has passed since that point, I think.
Correct.
I, I know that the first time, um, the application was looked at by the city, there was an issue, because there was not an engineered plan. There was a hand-drawn plan. A hand-drawn plan is not really comfortable space, and, um, that might have been, uh, kind of what was looked at, um, here. Um, I'm gonna, at this point, uh, pass it on to, uh, quite, either comment from anyone, if anyone is here for that, um, or questions or comments from the board, um, before I, uh...
Okay. Thank you.
Think about that. Is any other person here in person to speak on this matter? Is any other person online to speak on this matter? Um, and, uh, before I, I move over to our board members, I'm just going to, I'm just going to say that people say the same thing about the ZBAs, as you have said to people.
I don't find the ZBA as hard, to be honest with you.
I think we're all just trying to do our job and trying to do it well for the city.
Planning was difficult. They're tough. They're, they're tough over there.
All right. Um, Mr. Byrne, would you like to make a comment or ask a question?
No, I think Chris is doing okay.
Mr. Shartran?
Hurry up.
I, I just had one question as to, this is for a special permit to operate a restaurant in the residential neighborhood, correct?
Correct.
Why do we, what is this business about a nightclub, then?
That's what I asked the same question.
Nightclub is not even a permitted use in the city anymore.
He said, um, because, um, second floor is going to be live music, and there's gonna be a stage for live music that, that may be amended plans for the double doors for the nightclub.
Just making sure we're giving you the right permit here.
I asked the same question.
It's all I wanna know, you know, because it's a restaurant, so, um, okay.
Mr. Reynolds?
No comment.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my questions were actually answered by, um, Mr. Cordio about the roof, and so therefore I have nothing.
Great, thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for some clarification, there, there seemed, there's an addition, if I'm looking at the front of the building, to the left.
Correct.
That's getting removed and rebuilt properly, correct?
That, that little outlet building's going away, and a fifteen by thirty-four building is going up for a commercial kitchen extension.
Okay.
Correct.
Yep. Um, I think as we looked at this plan a little deeper and a little longer, you know, site plan came to mind because of, you know, the expansive parking lot, right? Um, and then kind of along with that, you look at a hundred and fifty potential visitors up to, right? With twenty-nine parking spots, and if I just do some quick math, that means every car's gonna have five people in it, and then where all the employees gonna park. So there's gonna be obvious spillover onto the roads, correct?
Yeah, I guess so. It probably would be. At a full capacity, it probably would be.
Yeah. Um, you know, and I know that there isn't a need or a requirement for you to go to site plan. I'm not trying to add in any additional costs, but, um, again, as we review this plan, right, um, might wanna give some consideration and maybe a site visit by some of the board members, to try to look at some green space on the front.
Yep.
Um, because I am a little concerned that it seems as though in Pittsburgh, people feel that they can use the parking lot, that, I'm sorry, the sidewalk as parking. And it's a pet peeve of mine that I see within the city, um, and, and becomes a real problem during the winter, and, and even right now, right, throughout the city. We wanna try to mitigate that from happening.
Correct.
Um, so I might recommend that at some point, we have some type of onsite kind of walk-around, so you can...
Maybe some planter boxes down, so people can't cross over and just park on the sidewalk.
A little further, kind of in-depth view of what we might do?
Yeah.
Secondly, um, just kinda help set the tone as far as the quality of the project. The, the, um, surface of the parking lot is completely eroding. We can probably go down there and just start pulling it up by hand.
Picking stuff up, yep.
Is that going to be removed and repaved?
Yes, oh, they're gonna completely mill it, yeah. No, it's gonna be completely removed and repaved.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, that kinda helps with my thought process.
Yep. That's not fixable, and even going over it, it's just gonna peel up the next year, so.
Okay, thank you. It's kinda the answer I was looking for.
Yeah.
Um, that's all I have right now. I mean, yeah, big projects like this take longer than anticipated.
Yep.
Um, but I think at some point, I'd like to maybe have a visit?
Yeah.
With some of us to, to kinda look at what we might call some, you know, aesthetics?
Yep.
Without trying to incur any costs?
Yeah, absolutely.
To you?
Yeah, I'm open to that, hundred percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Shartran, I'm just gonna, you had questioned whether it should be a special permit for a restaurant or something else?
I was just making sure that's what we're, we are doing, because that got confusing for me.
Yeah, just to look back, I took a note at the table of uses. I, there's certainly a nightclub, I think, within the building code.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have a nightclub within our table of uses that is different, um, from restaurant, and it says restaurant serves food and beverage.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it's probably the closest, um, that we have.
Yeah.
Building code, of course, and zoning code.
It's just kinda hard to tell somebody they're gonna do something that you don't know they're going to do. That is, that is difficult, so.
Um, building code and zoning code do not always, uh, hold themselves in agreement.
Correct.
So, um, when do you think you would be at the point where you are doing that, you would be preparing to do that exterior paving and landscaping?
Probably when the, probably next April, when the, uh, paving mills reopen, is when I'll have the outside addition done and that done, so we can pave. There won't be any more heavy equipment running, running across it.
Okay. Okay.
Especially the excavators, where they're going to be digging for that addition. We didn't, we didn't want to rip up a brand-new milling, so.
And then the other issue that always pulls at my memory is whether or not you are in that extension within the setbacks.
Yes. Yep. They reviewed it, and they applied, approved my building permit with the setbacks.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And I'm just going to remind you that we did not grant any relief from setbacks.
Yep. Yep. That's why we did 15. It gives us, we have 17 on the side, gives us 15, so we get the extra two feet, just to have it.
Yep. So if it turns out to be over the line, going to have to move it. All right. Anything to add before we go to board deliberations?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, I, does anyone have a comment on whether we should modify? Go back to my computer version. Condition 12, which says that site plan review is to be required in accordance with the zoning ordinance, and I'm just going to say that that may be interpreted as a statement that if site plan review is required, it's required, and if it's not, it's not, but we're not taking any action to waive or not waive it. If we were going to look at modifying it, my suggestion would be that we insert in its place a provision that paving and landscaping plan to be reviewed with onsite visit and review hearing in approx, at, at the April meeting with, with screening, green screening to be provided between parking and the roadway? Was that the essence of your comment, Mr. McLaughlin?
I think we may be best served by having a discussion onsite.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a visual person, and maybe come back to the board with some recommendations, or have the board visit in two groups and just think of what's best.
Board members in agreement with that decision or that suggestion?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, the site plan thing, the building environment can take care of that. So I don't see why we would even concern ourselves. If Mark wants them to do it, he's just tell them to do it. And then he can appeal it, or the, Mark can write it down and say, "You don't need site plan," and the planning board could appeal it. I don't see why we're dealing with that.
Okay. Like I said, I think our provision just says that whatever the zoning ordinance says it says.
Right. So I would, I would be in favor of leaving it, just the way it is.
We could leave that and add a condition. The April meeting is on April the 9th, and just provide that permit holder is to schedule a site visit to review the paving and landscaping plan. Approximately one week prior to the April meeting. So that would be adding a condition number 14, and then having a review hearing scheduled for the April 9th, 2024 meeting. Any comments on that proposal?
Sounds good. It sounds good.
And then a condition 15, that the petitioner shall update the plan. For the building department and the board. If no one has any further comment, I'm ready for a motion in that vein.
Make a motion on, excuse me, ZBA 2022-33 for Christopher Cordio for the property of 109 Oak Hill Road for a continuance until, is it April 9?
April 9.
With the condition, changes in conditions and additions as stated by the chair.
All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right. Are you clear?
Yep. I got it all written down.
Okay. Very good.
I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Yep.
See you next time.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to call the next matter, and I'm going to note that we have remote presenters on this matter. Maybe in person as well. Is this the remote one, or is this the?
It's a remote.
Christine, can I ask for a brief break?
Okay. We are going to, at this point, take a five-minute break, just to note the next matter is 87, 89, and 91 River Street. All right.
Yes.
We are resuming the meeting. We are now calling ZBA 2322, IVJ Group LLC. This is a property at 87, 89, and 91 River Street. This is a special permit under Section 181.333 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to reinstate a vacant or abandoned, non-conforming building and change the structure to provide for a substantially different purpose, and that is from manufacturing to a multifamily development pursuant to 181.336 and 74 and 94. This is located in the Adaptive Industrial District, which is a new district in our city as of some recent zoning changes. So, sir, welcome to the meeting. I am going to state that I am always glad to see a design professional come see us, so welcome. We look forward to your presentation. Can you please state your name and city of residence for the minutes?
Sure. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. My name is Anthony Cleves. I'm with Haley Ward. We're the civil engineers and land surveyors on the project. Also here tonight, in person, is Greg Moran from the Ivory Johnson Group, and we also have some folks online, I believe, from the Ivory Johnson Group and the design team that may ask to chime in a little later on.
So I'm going to indicate to them that if we are at a point where you wish to chime in, I'm generally going to let your representative, who is president in person, direct both the proceeding for the presentation and your participation in it. But if you do wish to participate, please raise your hand. There will be, of course, a point where we seek any comment from the public at that point in time. If you are here on this matter as an abutter or as any member of the public, please let me know if you wish to speak, or if you're online, raise your hand to speak. Sir, please proceed with your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As was mentioned, the proposed project is for the renovation of three existing historic mill buildings located at, excuse me, 87, 89, and 91 River Street. The project is intended to convert these three buildings into residential use, a mix of one and two bedroom units. We've submitted plans to the Conservation Commission and Planning Board for respective approvals through those boards as well. Little history on the project. This, this property was once the Walter Haywood Chair Company back in the late 1870s, is when this whole area was kind of developed. And then in the 1890s, it was then purchased by the Ivory Johnson Cycle and Arms Company, and that's been one of the names that's been associated with this historic property. This property is actually a portion of that old development with the neighboring properties around that. So the reason we are before the board tonight is because there are two of the buildings currently do not meet the existing setbacks to the property lines. One of them is 91 River Street, which is the building, if you have a plan in front of you in the board here, that's the plan on the bottom of the page, which is south. It's fronting along River Street. That does not conform to the required front yard setback. The front yard setback is 20 feet. The building is currently 10 feet. The other nonconformity is the building most to the top of the plan, I should back up. On the plan that you have in front of you, there are four buildings shown. The three in the bottom of the page are the ones associated with the project. 85 River Street is actually a separate property. That's the Kelly Wood Products building. So the, the next building closest to that is too close to the side yard setback. Side yard setback is required to be 25 feet. That existing building is 23 feet. The renovations of the building, it's all facade and interior, with the exception of one proposed addition, as you can see, hatched and a little darker, connecting buildings 87 and 89. That proposed addition conforms to the side yard and front yard setback, so none of the new construction is any, any, any more nonconforming, actually not nonconforming at all, and we're not increasing any nonconformity. As part of the project in a general sense, there will be improvements to the site, parking, landscaping, stormwater, water and sewer improvements. Again, that's, we're going through those review processes with Conservation, Planning Board, and subsequently all the department heads, DPW, fire, police, as part of those reviews. As I mentioned, we have submitted with them. We have been before the Conservation Commission in a couple hearings. We can expect to be with them again in October, and our first meeting with the planning board is in October as well. So that's a brief overview for you, if you have any questions.
All right. So I do have questions. I'm going to state right now, I'm asking for your assistance because you've just handed us a, a plan, and I usually take some time to read it with some glasses. So it was, when I took the initial review of this plan, it looked to me like there was the, so the side yard setback is 25, and all the way down, it's marked as 24 on the right-hand side?
That's correct.
So we do have that setback that's not met as well, right?
That's not a side yard setback.
And, and then the 23 is in the rear.
So...
And then the front one, so there's three.
So it's the other way around, actually.
Okay.
And so we had that discussion with the building commissioner. Front yard, side yard, and rear yard is based upon the dimensions of the lot. And so this is a corner lot, has frontage on, on two streets. And so the way the ordinance reads and the way we interpret it, and in coordination with the building department, they interpreted it as well, your front yard setback would be Knockeg Street, your, your narrowest dimension. So your rear yard setback would be on your plan, plan right, or the easterly property line. So the rear yard setback would be the ones that are 24 feet away, and the rear yard setback is required to be 20. So we conform to that. And so the, the left setback, if your frontage is Knockeg Street, looking at the end of the building, that would be your side yard, which is why we don't meet that of 25 feet. We only have 23. So it's, that's how it's, you know, through discussion with the building department, it was before any submission, and we wanted to make sure we, we had it right, because when I first went through it myself, I'm like, "Oh, jeez, I think we're, we're not conforming everywhere." But after review of that definition on what is rear, what is side, that's how we came up with that determination, in conjunction with the building department.
Thank you. You're aware, I assume, of the plan on record from 1958? for that created the subdivision of the big parcel?
Yeah.
That was owned by Ivory Johnson. And on that plan, there is a right-of-way shared in common by all of the lots that's marked on that.
Yeah, but it's also shown on that plan that you have in front of you that we drew. There are two right-of-ways. There's one that comes in off of Knockeg Street, a 20-foot wide right-of-way, and then terminates a couple hundred feet into building 87. And then also off of that, there's another 20-foot wide right-of-way that runs along the northerly side corner of the Kelly Wood Products Building. And so, and there's also another right-of-way on the right-hand side of your plan or the easterly side, another 20-foot right-of-way that somewhat runs along the center of the property line between our property and the property owners of Boardman Properties. And so as part of the project, going through planning and conservation, we're maintaining all of those ways. We're going to improve them, actually, with all-new pavement. Also, what's not on the old plan, too, is there's various utilities that are shared. And this was all one, one big property, to be honest with you. So there's a lot of shared water, shared sewer. And so as part of the project, all new infrastructure is being put in, main, water mains, sewer lines. And then where all those existing buildings connect, we're going to reconnect them at that same location.
So it'll end up being enough, at least a partial upgraded connection for all buildings?
Oh, substantially, yes, absolutely. I mean, the water main, I believe the water main is, you know, I don't know if it's, if it's ever been replaced, but, you know, most of the infrastructure is probably 100 years old. Sewer line most definitely coming from the Kelly Wood Products property. And then it comes right up that 20-foot right-of-way that comes up to River Street is that's where the sewer for all of these buildings, the project buildings as well as all the neighbors, all tie into that line. So that's going to be a brand-new SDF 35 PVC sewer pipe, you know, typical standard today. And currently, it's an old vitrified clay, probably not in great condition, to be honest with you. So that would be upgraded as part of this project.
So is that the utility right-of-way that's marked on the 1958?
So it's just noted as a 20-foot right-of-way. And I believe if you were to interpret the deeds and some of the deeds that we submitted there...
Looked at the deeds, and I've looked at this, yes.
It pretty much seems to give everyone rights to everything, to be honest with you, so, yeah.
It also mentions that there's a railroad spur coming in on, as I'm looking at this plan, the right-hand side of the right-of-way, and that all, all lots have the right to use and access the railroad spur. What's the status on that?
So the rails still exist. And if you, if you flip to page two that I submitted, that kind of shows some of the proposed layout. That has a lot more information on it. That's going to be even harder for you to see. But on the right-hand side, you'll have, as you get past the Boardman, the first Boardman Building off of River Street, you'll see, as you get further down, it's labeled rails. If I can, just for a second, I'll jump to the board and point that out.
Thank you.
In this area here, there are existing rails that are still in existence, but they don't go anywhere. Let me just get back to my track.
Is there any plan to seek to extinguish that easement with the neighboring properties?
No, we weren't getting into abolishing any easements or anything like that at this point. We're not going to change any of those. If anything, what we were asking is cooperation with the Kelly Wood Products abutting property owners for some stormwater improvements to go through their property to access the North Nashville River. So we've had conversations with them, and they were supportive of that. Also, we are doing some work on their property, as you'll see on that, that plan there, where some pavement improvements as well as some landscaping improvements along their building, just to kind of go along with some of the landscaping improvements that we were going to do. And we've, we've met with the Kelly family on that. And they've, they've been supportive thus far.
There's also a right-of-way that goes in between building 89 and 87, again on the 1958 plan and continuing on the deeds of the abutters?
Yeah, so, and that was, so we're not planning on changing anything there. You'll see on the layout plan there, that's where we're planning an accessible way through that area to maintain traffic flow through the site as well as to access parking. So we're trying not to do anything to impede any of the right-of-ways and allow them to be, if anything, more accessible than they ever were.
Does the proposed new portion of the building allow for the passage of traffic, foot or vehicular underneath it?
No. So what that, what that, that building addition is, is basically the lobby area. That'll be your front entrance. You'd come in off of the parking area, walk in. You'd have a mailroom, storage room, bike storage, things like that. So that's kind of your entry area, and then you could get into those other two buildings from there. Nothing underneath, no.
The application wasn't specific on how many units you're looking to build?
Yeah, it's...
Said one to, one and two-bedroom units.
Yep. So it's going to be, at this point, we're proposing 51-bedroom units and 15-two-bedroom units.
50 and 15?
15-two-bedroom and 51-bedroom for a total of 65 units. That's shown on that second plan. In the top right corner, there's a table that shows that in relation to parking requirements.
Parking summary?
Yes.
Yeah, on the second page is a parking summary.
And so the parking that you've depicted on this plan is compliant with the parking regulation?
Correct.
Both in number and in dimension?
Correct.
As well as the access driveways?
Correct.
Is, so I'm reading the second page of the plan, and it looks like you have two-way traffic movement all the way around?
Almost everywhere. And I'll, if I can, I'll drive you through the site if that makes sense.
That would be great.
Yeah, sure. So we have two accesses. It's the two existing accesses to the property. You have one off of River Street, which is two-way, in and out both ways. And you have one off of Knockeg Street, kind of on the end of the lot, which lines up with Nursery Lane, the other corner of Knockeg Street. So if you were to come in, let's say on River Street, you could, you could come into that access. It's two-way. You could, you could come down, continue to the Kelly Wood Products Building, continue to the Boardman Properties Buildings as you would today. You could also take a left into that first access aisle between our first two buildings, 89 and 91, and also continue down to a parking area that we had between buildings 89 and 87. If you were to come in from the Knockeg Street side, both two-way in and out, you could come in, take a right, getting into the parking area, continue through between 89 and 91. There's also some parking up near that proposed addition, which is that lobby area. Some parking space is there. And then at that point, it, it changes to one-way only. And that's one-way heading from west to east, from Knockeg Street to the right-of-way that exists on the east side of the property, basically between the Kelly Wood Products Building and our building, number 87. One-way, and then we have angular parking in the direction of that one-way traffic. And then you continue out to that two-way traffic on that right-of-way that goes out to River Street.
Can you describe the current traffic movement, both the direction and the load frequency, character of vehicles that's coming out of Kelly Wood Products? How does it move and what is moving in general?
I probably can't speak in great detail on their business. But I presume they probably use most of Knockeg Street access in and out. It's the closest to some of their, their storage areas in there. But they probably also use River Street to some degree, too. They have access all around their building. And we're not changing any of that. If anything, we're improving all of the paved areas so that access can maintain however they use it today, if not better.
Do they have a separate entrance onto Knockeg Street other than the shared right-of-way?
It's all shared, yep. It's all, this, this area, and that's where that, as you had mentioned, a 20-foot right-of-way. One of them begins on Knockeg Street, and another one begins on River Street. So essentially, everyone that is part of this historic area has the rights to drive in all those. And so we're not changing any of that. If anything, we're making those accesses better.
Does the, is the width of the right-of-way on, on the right-hand side, not Knockeg Street, the right-of-way on the right-hand side of the property, where you have that easement regarding the railroad spur, is there sufficient width for a conforming two-way access road there?
Yeah, so we're providing a 24-foot wide access. Existing right-of-way is 20. So we're, we're making the new paved access a little wider than the right-of-way. What's actually being driven on there now is a little bit wider than the 20 feet. So it's, you know, 20 feet would be absolute minimum code for two-way traffic and for emergency vehicles. We always tend to go to the 24 to make sure there's plenty of room to do that.
And are you doing that by moving closer to the buildings? Are you getting...
Also to our buildings, correct, yep.
All right. Have you thought about screening? Because there are, there's a bunch of industrial uses as is appropriate to the historic nature of the property. You have the Kelly Wood Products. I believe there is a former, there's an auto repair shop of some side, some kind at the back right-hand corner, another building. There's tractor-trailer storage on a vacant lot. And then there's another building on the front. Have you given some thought to screening?
Yeah, so we, we have limited space, to be honest with you, too, in some of those locations. We are proposing some landscaping, actually along Kelly Wood Products Building. That was one of the conversations we had with the Kelly family is if, if they would allow us to do some improvements, because it's actually, some of it's on their property. And they had no objections to that. So planning on putting in some bushes and some, maybe some perennials, things like that along there. We're also putting a lot of drip edges along each of the long edges of the buildings where the roof runoff comes off. We're planning on doing the same thing on the Kelly Wood Products Building, kind of match the aesthetics with that. And then we'll have some, some trees here and there where we can fit them in. But those, those corners of the building that are kind of facing the auto shop, we have, we're going to put a new sidewalk in there. There really isn't room to do any screening, but also it's going to be the corner of the building. There's not going to be really windows for these units looking out in that direction as well. But we are, we are looking to do landscaping where we, where we can for that. We're also planning on doing some landscaping in between 87 and 89 River Street. Those are the two middle buildings, we'll call them. That area, we have a walkway, kind of like a little courtyard area for, for the community, some, some trees, some small trees and bushes in there. And then like a patio seating area at the end as you get up against the, the new lobby area.
You're projecting to have market rate rentals? Is that the use?
Correct.
Or you're not going to be selling these as condominiums?
That's correct.
Correct. No condominium, correct, Greg?
No condominiums. They may need a blend of subsidized housing, you know, to possibly 20%. The plan right now is to have it.
So that would be under the smart growth provisions, that you'd have some consideration of that?
So right now, we haven't filed under the smart growth, because the original 10 was all market rate.
It's always market rate until they go for financing. And then they have to go to the state, and the state will say, you know, to subsidize housing.
Certainly. And just, you know, to add, my comment on the other side of that would be market rate housing is almost unaffordable right now for many people of normal income needs. So I would... I would certainly love to see some reasonable rental rates so that people could, people could afford to stay in town, whatever you decide to call it. What's your timeline on construction once permitting is accomplished?
I think ideally, if, you know, with, with funding in place, looking to start some of the, the building work, maybe into the next year, maybe even into the winter if possible, if, again, if the funding lines up and that, and that could happen, then site work wouldn't be probably till later on in the construction season. But again, still, still funding is, is always in many projects. Still one of the things that needs to be worked out. And as we get through, hopefully, all the review processes with all the boards, you know, there could be some changes that may be needed, you know, that could impact some of the construction costs, too, so.
Are you planning on phasing the project?
No, at this time, I don't think there's any, any phasing planned.
Okay, so everything would be built at once, then? And once, again, once permitting has been completed, once financing is in place from the beginning of construction to end, what's the time period that you would project?
I believe it was at least a full year. Greg, do you remember what the...
It was 15, 18.
Thank you.
If all goes well.
I certainly am going to need some time looking at the plans myself. And I am sure that my board members are going to have many questions. But before I get to board members, I'm going to offer a public comment. Did you, did you want any of your other presenters to make comment before I do that?
I don't, I don't think we need any at this point. They're probably just going to want to speak in favor, which they might want to do, but... Unless you have any specific questions, I don't, I think we're all set for now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, I know that you are online. If you do want to make a comment, please raise your hand. All right. So I am going to allow you to speak, sir. Welcome. Please state your name and city of residence for Ms. Mata. And you're welcome to make a comment, sir.
Yes, thank you. My name is John Kelly. I'm a resident of Gardner, Massachusetts, and a part-owner of Kelly Wood Products.
And what would you like to state about the proposal?
It appears to us that the proposal is a very good one. Mr. Cleves has spoken accurately about our conversations and our general support of the project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I am going to mute you again. If a board member has a question for him during that time, do you have a question?
Someone in the audience.
Okay, all right. You are welcome. Please approach the podium, state your name and city of residence, and you're welcome.
Evening, members of the board. I'm Jim Boardman from Ashby. I own Boardman Properties, the two properties that bought this. Some of the questions I have may not pertain to tonight, but I'm going to ask them. Maybe you can point me in the right direction. When they say they've maintained this...
Yes, sir. You own what?
Boardman Properties, the two lots, 79 River Street and then the one out back. Do you see those? You want me to...
They are not on the plan, but they would be here and here.
You mean on, you're the one all the way back on the river?
Right here, the one that, the one that goes to River Street and then the lot behind it.
Do you own the...
You own the trailers, then?
Yes, sir.
Do you own the property that has the red structure on it?
No, I do not. That's the next property back.
Thank you.
So when I came to the board back in '06, you didn't demand, but you asked that I don't pack trailers off of River Street, that I use the right-of-way. So my question is, is do we need to have tools in place? I'm in favor of all this, absolutely, but I can't stop my business. I have wholesale auto parts, BOMCO, which I also own. So I don't know, they've never reached out to me. I watched a building for them. I have one gentleman out of this whole thing that I send pictures to if there's a problem. I think they wanted to buy this lot. We couldn't come to an agreement. So when they talk to Mr. Kelly, they don't talk to me at all. So I have some concerns. One is, I have four or five trailers a day that deliver and use this right-of-way. So is it going to be okay? Or are there other tools that we need to put in place so it's safe? that we need to put in place so it's safe for pedestrians if it's gonna be a residential area? The other question I have is, I have a mailbox that's common for the whole unit on my property, that I'd like to know what we're gonna do with, because I get letters all the time sitting, I'm responsible to keep it clear for the snow, but nobody can answer me who, who holds the liability if someone falls and hurts themselves. So I wanna make sure that we're not using the same mailbox, as if that's the case. I, I don't know how that works. The other question I have is, I found out tonight that they are gonna take care of the utilities, because we share utilities. I've had to do 24-hour fire watch a few times through the years, and they've never maintained this road. They did once when I complained. I plow it. I, I, all of us have taken turns, Mr. Kelly as well, to fill it in, because there's so much traffic here that the road doesn't get maintained, and you can barely pass through it, as you can probably see now. The other problem I have, or question I have, is when this starts, what do we do for a construction plan? Because in the last year, I've had low beds use my lot, I've had to throw people out, electricians. They come in, they block the whole lot, because there's no plowing, there's no landscaping, there's nothing to do with parking all the contractors there. So just the other day, all the state people came in to look at it, and I had to say, "People, please, I have a business to run. Can you park on their property?" Because it's not maintained. So I don't know what direction to head with all this. And I do wanna make sure it is safe, because I do have a business to run. So if I'm, if we can't fit trailers in here, because Kelly Wood Products also has trailers and trucks that come through here, and we're not mentioning that, so what do we do about that?
That was one of my questions, is where do their trucks go for the wood?
Yeah, well, Kelly Wood Products is excellent. They, their truck comes in here every day, and the employees go through here. You'll have to let him speak for himself.
Excellent right now.
Yeah. And they go through the back street, but all my trailers, all my deliveries go through, through here, per the city of Pittsburgh.
It's right, excellent right now, but there'll be 75 cars there.
What's that?
There'll be 75 cars associated with this property.
Well, that's, that's the challenge we have here. I'm not opposed to this, but I'd like to work together, and I don't get any input from these people at all. I actually get stuck with one of the sewer bills fixing the sewer line that wasn't on my property, and I didn't ask for the money, but it's, there is not a lot of cooperation. So if we could have some cooperation moving forward, again, I'm all for helping the community on River Street. I really am. I've been down there since '06. We've cleaned up trash after football games. We've got zero help from the city. It's okay. But I don't wanna add to a problem where people are unsafe, and now we have a major problem where a tractor-trailer or a delivery truck, or one of my guys loading vans, has problems with residents in a residential area that's supposed to be an industrial area. I'm okay with this, but we need to make sure we have the tools in place. And I would like some cooperation from these people where, hey, this is what we're doing. It wasn't until tonight I found out that my sprinkler line was gonna be replaced. I thought the utilities would come in from Knottledge Street, and I, I didn't know. So that's some of the concerns I have.
Okay. Can I ask, when you're bringing your tractor-trailers in and out, and it's to park on that vacant lot, right? That's where...
Nope, no, they get deliveries. They go around the building. It's common deliveries, and those, all my trailers park out back. I bought that lot to slow the traffic down, because there's no control here. They used to speed through here, the repair shop's out back, and all day long, it was dangerous for my employees and my customers. So I bought this lot, I put a dirt berm there, and put some trailers in there, so it would be safe. It's a constant challenge. Even the owners of this unit speed through my lot, because there's no maintenance here. The bumps, as you can see right now, you can barely drive through it. So we all take turns. Kelly Wood Products, myself, we just take turns on maintaining this road. So I, I don't know if it's correct or not.
And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I'm, I'm trying to understand in the traffic flow that you use.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you require, do you have to back up anywhere along the roadway, or are you pulling in, making a delivery, and able to pull out?
No. So the deliveries or my drivers? Which would you like, man, first?
I, I wanna understand, does anybody need to back out onto that road?
Out onto the right-of-way or River Street?
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
My vans get loaded, there's a ramp on the side in the morning. I have four vans. We load up, and they're gone for the day. I don't have retail. I'm a wholesale auto parts establishment. So that's not a big deal. The tractor-trailers come in, they go around the back of the building, and then they back into a loading dock here. They make their delivery, and then they're gone. They pull out onto River Street, either right or left, or now right, because the road's closed, but, and, and that's the flow of the traffic.
Okay. So if this board were looking at some kind of screening between the residential and industrial use, that would interfere with the loading up of your vans? Am I correct?
I don't know if it would interfere, as far as, what do you mean when you say screening? What...
If I had a row of arboretis coming up in between the right-of-way in that building...
I don't think there's enough room there for that, but I'm, you'd have to...
Yeah.
Trying to screen it so that you won't have those complaints.
Yeah. And, and I don't think it would be a problem. We load up, it's, it's out of the way. It's just the challenge of the trailers. Is it safe? And again, don't get me wrong, I want this. This is a good thing for the community. We just need the tools to make sure these people are safe. If there's a major traffic flow here, and this tractor-trailer's pulling in here four or five times a day, do we need different tools in place, whether it's signage, crosswalks, whatever? It's not proposed here. I, I don't know. I just wanna bring it up and make sure this is safe. I don't wanna have a problem down the road, because the city of Pittsburgh said, "Look, you can run a business here. We'd just rather you didn't back in off of River Street all the time." So if this becomes a problem where, you know, like, like, for instance, when the contractors come and they block this right-of-way, now I have trucks backing in off of River Street. If there's a problem here where people start parking here and it's not enforced, now we're gonna have trailers backing in off of River Street. I just need, I have to get those deliveries during the day, whether it be a common carrier or a tractor-trailer load in the morning. So those are the concerns I have.
I very much appreciate your coming to the meeting and making these known to us. I'm going to state to you, because this has to go through a couple different boards...
Absolutely.
...to get permission, us, ConsCom, and the Planning Board. We all have handled different aspects of it. I think, I certainly, you know, have concern for it, and I, I, you know, certainly wanna make sure all of the businesses continue to operate in there. The fine detail on this will be before the Planning Board. I highly encourage you to attend the Planning Board meetings, so that you can make these comments known to them as well, and have them look at when they're doing the detailed landscaping plan, paving plan, that all of these things get taken into consideration.
Absolutely.
Okay. But thank you very much for your comment and for coming to the board. Appreciate it. Is any other person here to speak on this matter? Sir, you're welcome to speak. Just give Ms. Mata your name and city of residence.
Hi, Greg Moran. I'm retired now from the Obeshaan Realty Company, but I worked there for 45 years in handling real estate. And I got my tractor-trailer license in 1974. And I'm 100% behind Mr. Boardman, because I understand retailing, and I understand his operational needs, and I certainly respect them. So I appreciate his comments this evening. And, you know, that 20-foot wide right-of-way is the vehicle, you know, to protect his rights and that traffic flow that he described. And we're certainly gonna abide by that and hopefully improve upon it, to, to make sure that we address any and all of those concerns, whether it's a mailbox or any attempt, you know, by operators to encroach on that 20-foot right-of-way. But I just wanted to speak positively about the helpful comments. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'm gonna go to board members. I'm gonna say on my part, I particularly will need until the next meeting to digest and make sure I have looked fully at all the plans and thought about my questions.
We'll just hold off until next meeting.
We certainly can. We certainly can. Mr. Reynolds did have his hand up, though.
I did. May I ask a question?
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just relative to the parking plan, this is the second page. Just out of curiosity, you've got a couple of parking spaces that are 25 feet versus 18 feet, so more between 85 River and 87. Just curious, is it like 25 feet because of a particular use, or just because they're angled?
It's because it's angled. That's three, that's the parking requirements. When you have angular parking, it's different dimensions.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Does any border, board member want to ask a question or make a comment this meeting, or should we look at next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay. Mr. McGlaughlin?
Just a question in general. Has it been before site plan yet, Planning Board?
No, it has not.
Okay. When is that? Is it...
October. They're, they're only meeting in October.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Second question is, I'd like to do a viewing of some of the buildings with the applicant. That's, that's okay before the next meeting?
We'd be happy to have a site walk, whatever, at your, the board's convenience. We'd be happy to meet you over there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't wanna cause any delays. You know, I know we need another month to kind of digest, receive the info tonight, but I'm, I'm pretty, pretty optimistic about this project. And, you know, it's been a long time coming, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So we...
Sure, I stand up. If you want me there as well, I'm all for this. If we can walk around together, if there's anything I can do to improve, I never painted my building, so it would blend in because of the atmosphere of that street. You can't have a beautiful, fancy street, uh, building on River Street without it getting trashed out. So I'll leave my name and number. If you wanna walk around, we can work together. I just want this to be safe, and I still wanna run a business and not have a problem 10 years from now. Yes, sir.
Who ought to get together with him, the two? You guys should...
I would if they reached out to me. I honestly would. I, I, there's one of the members of this whole thing that I talk to all the time. If someone reached out to me, I would definitely get together with them. But when you guys walk around, if you want me there, let's do it, because I'm all for it, and I'll improve my building as well.
Thank you.
Just trouble you to write your number down for us?
I'm gonna give you guys a card.
And you guys can share it, or whatever. You can leave a message, and I'd be more than happy. Whoever needs it, I...
Go by Jim or James?
Uh, James.
Thank you.
Okay. And, and again, you don't own that red building in the back?
No, I, I... That's a whole other story in a second. Nothing to do with it.
Okay. Thank you. So I'd, I'd certainly welcome you at a, either, either that site visit, or to walk over afterwards and look at your buildings. I'd be happy to do that.
Go together, if you guys wanna, whatever you wanna do, I'm on board. I just need to be involved, that's all.
Okay. I wanna talk about when to hold a review. The Planning Board will not meet and have its first site plan review until after our October meeting. And they will certainly not decide on whatever their decision is gonna be at their first meeting, or at least I would, I would be very surprised if you did not require two meetings at, at a minimum before them.
We're hopeful.
It's always possible, though.
We're hopeful. We're doing as much legwork up to that as we can, just the way scheduling has worked out. So we're trying to set up meetings with department heads to try and flush out any, anything beforehand. So if there are concerns, hopefully, we can address them before we meet with them. But we're hopeful. But I understand what you're saying.
Which is to say, I think we could schedule for our November meeting, the review, right? And, and we wouldn't necessarily cause a delay, assuming either we, you know, vote in...
Possibly. The other thing, I don't know if it's worth considering, is I always, I always hate to miss a meeting. And reason for that is, if there's something that, that maybe you find in your review between now and October, and you have a question that we need to come back with information, that gives us an opportunity to then come back in November with whatever bit of information you may have needed. I always hate to miss the opportunity to come before a board or a commission, just in case it's something that we all forgot about tonight, that you may wanna bring up, and it gives us one more chance to have everything you need in that November meeting. That would be my only thing to consider there.
Okay. Inclination of the board, October, November?
I would think November.
November. Yeah, I agree. So I would be looking to have, to continue the hearing until November, and scheduling the site visit in between then, now and then. And I think at the site visit, you're also going to get some feedback from the board, which is a great opportunity to do that.
Site plan is November?
The first Planning Board meeting on the, their special permit and site plan is at the end of October, fourth week of October.
Okay. And we wanna kick it to November versus October because of...
Site plan will be in front of the Planning Board.
Yeah, they're going to have some initial reaction from the Planning Board. I would like the Planning Board and the Zoning Board to work in concert, concert on this project, to, you know, have a, a plan that, that is kind of a full concept plan, with both of the ends that we handle of the permitting process.
Okay. So do you wanna see a approved site plan?
No.
Or a, a plan as part of...
I don't want to see the approved site plan before we make a decision. I would not require that. But I do think that there's gonna be more fully developed plans that are presented to the Planning Board. Maybe I'm wrong. But I, I think your plans before the Planning Board will be more fully developed than the ones that we have today. And if we get some more detail prior, I, I would like to see that as well.
Sorry to interrupt. I did not submit the full 15-sheet site plans. I thought this was just a special permit for alteration of an existing non-conforming building. All of those plans do exist, and they all were submitted. So I can, happy to forward the full set of construction details, locations of water mains, and all of that. I just didn't wanna overwhelm you with a lot of information that didn't seem pertinent to the expansion of a non-conforming building. But I'm more than hap, the city has all that information. More than happy to, to forward it, you know, through the ZBA Administrator, and you'll have everything that everyone else has.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that. As you know, the special permit process and statute allows wide latitude to avoid...
No, I apologize for, I, I just didn't, I didn't wanna overwhelm with a lot of information that maybe wasn't pertinent. I apologize for that, and I certainly get it over to, to the Administrator.
One of the things that I would be interested in knowing, because these buildings are so close to the road, they're so close to the other industrial uses, is what, and they are historic, what aspects are being preserved? And that's something that can be the topic of discussion at the next meeting or site...
I was just, sorry to interrupt, but it's, we're actually going for historic tax credits.
Mm-hmm.
So they have a lot of control over what we can and can't do. So we really need to maintain the historic character and restore it back to that, that historic look. So we actually can't do too much without maintaining that historic...
And this building is in the flood zone?
Correct.
Does it have to be raised, the level of the floor, because the buildings adjacent to it?
Because it's a historic building, there's an exemption in the, in the building code for that, so we do not have to adjust the floors. And we've had that discussion and process through the Historic Commission, as well as the Building Department. Not to take any more of your time, but a little side note on the flood...
Oh, they're just gonna let it flood?
It's a great, it's a great question. Boy, you're a little bit, I'm sorry to take up too much of your time, but on the floodplain, for a number of years now, we've understand that there's various studies being done on this north central Mass, north, the natural watershed, and updating the flood studies that exist. Currently, there are preliminary flood maps on, on FEMA's database that do show the floodplain changing in this area, and actually coming down a number of feet. It would still be in the floodplain, but, but it would bring it down a couple of feet, where some of these floors actually would end up be above the floodplain. We didn't have the luxury of waiting for those maps to become effective and to code. So we've designed everything off of the current flood maps, in the hopes that, once we do get in construction in the next, in this winter and maybe next year, those maps will be effective. But, good question. Thank you.
And the other question I had is, is this still considered a brown site?
Brownstone?
Brown site. It was a, there was some contamination on that.
Oh, the contamination has been remediated.
Okay.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is pertinent to us being prepared at the next meeting. More concerned over anything about the two dilapidated buildings that are behind Mr. Boardman's property, has there been any discussion with that property owner with regards to purchase, the condition of the buildings, their participation in wanting to make this all better?
No, I believe the ownership group reached out to them, as we did with all the property owners, to let them know what we're planning on doing. I don't know if they ever actually got any feedback from that property owner on that.
Okay.
I never met with them specifically myself. I'm not aware that the ownership group ended up connecting with them, but I believe they did reach out for just discussing.
Your client has a comment?
I met with J and L, the realty trust, the owners of those two parcels, just, you know, to have communication and ask for input. And they were very supportive of what we're trying to do, you know, with the historic aspect of, you know, being required to put the building back to its original condition, slate roof and everything you would have expect that it looked like on day one. So yes, I have met with them, but there was no discussion on, you know, that we would like to buy your property. And it's, and part of that reasoning is it's outside, you know, the scope of this project. It's funny, over the last 45 years, what I've learned is you always have in a butter, meaning no matter how much property you buy, there's always going to be another neighbor. So you can't own, you can't own your way out of an issue. You know, you can only discuss it and try to address it. So yeah, the conversation is open, but it's not an avenue that we're pursuing. But given the opportunity, yes, it'd be a wonderful thing.
So what are you going to do about the uses of those buildings?
Like, I can't control, I can't control who lives in your house or my house or, you know, I don't, we don't have any deed at rights.
For that traffic coming and going, nobody cares?
No, the right of way.
That traffic, from what I, what we learned today, that traffic coming and going is two motorcycle gangs that rent the place out, and they only come a couple times a year.
Right, so nobody cares?
Nobody cares.
Okay.
So I don't think anybody doesn't care. We're just not at a point of resolution with that.
You know, we would love to be part of that solution. And we have our eye on it, and we have a communication towards that, but it's not on the table. If, you know, it's a very nice way of trying to say it.
Am I right in understanding that there are some apartments being operated out of the red building?
I would not know.
Like you said, you always have in a butter, but if you could get rid of that a butter, it would make this property look a lot nicer.
Yeah. Well, we're aware of that, and that's why the communication is open.
Hopefully they'll change the patina.
All right, thank you, sir. I think we need to move on. I need to have you sign an extension agreement. And I would like to ask for a motion from the board on a proposed continuance date.
November the...
November the 14th is the November date.
Okay. Make a motion under ZBA 2023-22 to the 4J Group LLC for the property at 878991 River Street for a continuance until November...
14.
14, 2023.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And through the building department, if you could be in contact with some, a couple dates for a proposed site visit. And Mr. Boardman, you're welcome as well, either on that site vis... So you are welcome first to, as far as I'm concerned, I can't give permission for somebody else's property, but to join us on the site visit or schedule one where we look at your property separately and discuss with you separately. And if you would like a separate date, please contact the building department and we'll be happy to schedule that.
Walk around, how do I know what date is, I guess is my question. Like, if you walk around with them and you want me there, just so we can figure it all out, how do I know?
So we're going to send you, if, am I all right in doing that?
Email or phone call.
Okay.
Thanks.
We'll let you know of the date. I don't have permission to allow you on the property. If the property owner doesn't mind, then that's fine. And if not, we'll, you know, talk to you on the date. So, sir, I need you to sign this, please. This is the extension agreement for...
Would you like one of the property owners to...
I need a property owner to sign it, please.
You're right, Greg.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So we will see you again in November and before. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next matter is ZBA 2323. This is David Bellata, Zero Gale Street. This is a request for a variance under section 181.93 of the zoning ordinance, seeking relief for a dimensional frontage requirement to erect a two-family dwelling pursuant to 181.416 located in residential B. Sir, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you. Could you each let Ms. Mata know what your names and cities of residence are for the minutes?
Yes, my name is David Bellata. I'm a resident at 791 Franklin Road in Fitchburg. I've been in Fitchburg for over 40 years.
Ian Brennan, Westford. I grew up, I grew up in Fitchburg.
Okay. And what city are you living in now?
Uh, Westford.
Thank you. We don't require you to grow up in Fitchburg to be a permit holder, but we welcome you back.
Thank you.
All right. I would like, if you can, to describe to me what you're asking for. I know that we've had some board members out there and, of course, because you have a street that's not a street, that is on streets that are supposed to be streets but aren't streets, a good visual orientation will help us all as to where you plan to locate the frontage.
So, so right now, we have Milton Street, which is off of Clyde. So we've got Clyde that comes around. We've got Milton Street. Gale Street is just a private way, Paper Street. And we've got Hancock, and we've got Smith Street over here. So Ian has purchased these two properties for myself, and he has built two duplexes that face Smith Street. And then I have this last lot, Lot 3, that I wanted to develop. And there was a couple options to look at and say, you know, do we build a street here and, you know, get another duplex over here, or you make it simple and just come in and make it off Gale Street completely and just put the driveways back on to the property, which is, you know, roughly almost three times the size that it needs to be. So my thought process was to continue where the road basically ends and pave just going to the driveway to, to the duplex there.
So it would technically have frontage on Gale Street, but Gale Street is a path in the woods?
Yes.
Yes.
Pathway, whatever, yeah, it's a pathway.
Okay. There is a gravel passage that's built, if I'm looking at this plan, on the left-hand side.
If you, you saw gravel this way, first of all, the whole area is in gravel, pavement or whatever you want to call it, but yes, he has put in some gravel through here where Fitchburg Unitil has an easement for me to pass and repass in order to maintain their cables that are down on the property.
So they had as well the right to install cables and support wires and...
So they have the cables, et cetera, provided to me purchasing from them. And then, you know, there was a 20-foot waive from them that was back when I did the project back in 2008.
So does that right extend into the gravel area?
Yes. Yeah. So that goes along, basically where you saw the fence, that goes 20 feet out from the fence where they maintain their, their lines. And they do use that to check every slot and clean wires.
That's why I didn't see them loom it, because they bring their bucket trucks in.
Yep.
But the area up here, that'll be blocked off indefinitely. So you can't pass through it. But they, I didn't see them loom this area, because if they're driving bucket trucks in, I have to loom it for them.
Okay. So how much space is remaining if we exclude the area over which they have the easement?
It's actually marked on here, so there's a total of 58 feet, and other 58, 20 inches of easement for units.
Okay, so there's 38 feet left?
Yes.
Is there any plan to actually improve that Gale Street?
Uh, no.
It seems like the people who live at the corner are using that as their parking driveway?
Yes. Yes, there's two houses there that do use that to park. No.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. The other two houses were constructed according to a 2005 special permit, or at least there was? 2008?
Sure.
Okay.
So these, yes, yeah, but they were approved, a plan, in 2008?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Was it an ADR plan?
Yes.
Did it designate that as a non-buildable lot?
At that time, it just said that...
It's a parcel, right?
I'm sorry.
I think it says parcel.
Yes, that's the word. Yes. Yeah.
All right.
Because they didn't have the frontage, they couldn't call it a lot.
And your plan is to build a duplex, own and rent it out?
Rent it out.
Rent it out.
This one is already rented out.
Is there a reason you didn't want to take access from that street? I mean, I know it's a frontage issue, but yeah.
Because the street ends, then Unitil's property actually starts. And actually, Unitil's property actually looks like a little paper street, so there isn't like any continuity. So even if you wanted to make this like a circle around, you can't, because they actually don't connect.
Okay.
They don't. So that area where, I think a couple of you guys drove in, I saw in my construction cameras, that's going to be blocked off, because I just do it for construction vehicles. But once that, once construction's done, that's blocked off, like people aren't allowed in. I don't mind if like neighbors walk their dog or whatever through it, but it's not going to be like the true way at all. And then the idea is Unitil will come in through here with their bucket truck, maintain the lines, and then they'll back down.
So the... The frontage, you're asking for frontage for the, for the proposed duplex is going to be where?
So this would be, so Milton stops somewhere, probably around here somewhere. And then what I would want to do was to put the driveway, 20-foot driveway that would come out, not past Gale Street at all.
Where's the heavy riprap right now?
Right here. So basically where the excavator is on, did you go over there?
Yeah. We drove over some pretty chunky, I thought it was on where Milton, at the end...
Oh, are you talking about where they paved at the end of where the paving is?
When we left, we, the excavator and the piles right around, yeah, correct. So when we left, we came out this way.
Yep.
And it was...
Oh, he put stone...
We did it for the, for the trucks that were hauling, like backfilling and stuff, because it makes the road dirty.
Yep. So what happens, so ultimately, this gets paved?
Yeah, from where it stops now.
This is a right of way for Unitil.
Yep.
This gets blocked off.
Yeah, right up here, blocked off.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Right. I appreciate that you put together a narrative in response to the questions on the petition. The big question, however, with a variance of any quined, is whether there is a hardship created by the soil, the shape of the lot, the topography, or an existing structure. And we have to find that there is, for there's a hardship created by one of those four reasons, or we can't consider the granting of the variance. And I didn't see the response to that in your narrative. So could you tell me how there's a hardship related to the soil, shape, topography, or an existing structure?
So arguably, would be usually, would be the shape, I think, the way the shape is, it's not allowing me to be able to build, because of the way the street is set up, the sort of topography, I would take it with the issue of the lane is just long.
And you have, you said, twice the required area for, to build on?
Actually, it's almost three. It's required 10, and it's 28,000 square feet. So it's 124 feet deep. But again, because of the shape, what limited is what we could do other than to take this and build a road here and then, you know, put another duplex here.
Build a road.
Right. But to keep it simple, if we could come in and use the side, because we can't use the whole thing, that would be because of the shape.
And am I right in considering that without some allowance on the frontage, nothing can be built on this property?
Right now, I would say that would be correct.
I am going to open it up to see if any member of the public has a comment before I go to board member questions. But I will note that I, that plan has the house located on it.
Yes.
And the plan that I have doesn't. So if you could forward a PDF to Ms. Mata after the meeting, so she can have a copy of it for the minutes? Okay, thank you. All right. Is there any member of the public who is here to speak on this petition? Seeing none, and we have no attendance online, I'm going to go to board members for questions. Mr. Reynolds? No questions. Mr. Chartrand?
I don't think I have any questions either. It's pretty straightforward. They explained it.
Okay. Mr. Byrne?
No.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
No comment, Christine.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
This one, I'm going to thank you.
Okay. All right. I'd like to get an indication whether the board would like to vote on this tonight or whether you'd like to move it for further consideration.
I just had one question that, even if we grant variance, they still have to go back to planning?
I think they'd need a site plan. Is there...
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
I was saying that normally when you have a lot like that, granting the variance is just giving you the relief there, you'd still have to go back to planning.
They're not going to require it for a special permit because the two families allowed by right in the district.
Okay, gotcha.
So I haven't examined that question, but it may be that we are the only board that they see.
All right.
Anyone else have a comment on vote or continue? Yes, sir?
Thank you. To understand, just so I'm clear, who's the applicant?
Myself, Dave Bellata.
Okay. And do you, are you just the builder?
I'm going to buy it and build it. It's like I bought the other two, so he's...
I'm the owner of the parcel. I'm the one applying for the zoning board approval.
So just to help me with timeline and the land itself, you purchased it all as one large parcel?
2005.
Okay.
And then in 2008, 2006, I think it was, they approved a plan for six units.
Six?
Six. They were going to be ranch-style handicap units.
Ooh, pla- pla- excuse me, planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
So that was approved...
For you.
Myself, correct. Time went by and changed my mind, busy at work, and then I went back in 2008, and that's when we changed to the, taking the 1 point-some acres and divided it by the three lots.
So in 2008, the lot, the land was divided?
Again, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got...
But that time you created two buildable lots and one non-buildable lot?
That is correct.
What was the reason for creating land that was not usable?
I don't have a good, I can't tell you a good reason.
That's a good answer.
Yes.
Honest answers are always good.
Yeah, I can't tell you why.
Okay.
I think there was just so much going on that I just, so...
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I will say that I looked at the deed, and there's a long note attached, which is unusual to the deed, from the, it says, "Note to title examiners." There's a statute that says when you have a plan and the plan is of record, and whether or not the streets are built, everybody gets to use the right-of-way.
Correct.
And unless you specifically say otherwise, and this deed is one of the very few that I've seen where it specifically says otherwise, that you don't necessarily have the right to use the way. And I think it was because Unitil wanted to keep control.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, over that portion of the property.
Right.
Have you clarified that you would have the right to build?
Yes.
That driveway where you want to build?
Yes, that's all part of the deal that we had with, that I had with Unitil.
Okay.
With the written easement, that's all been recorded.
Okay. I had seen the 2005 special permit recorded. Did you also, okay, I see it. I don't see it, the 2008 decision, did you record that?
You should have a copy in that packet that actually shows the planning board that signed off of that.
Was it a decision or was it just the A and R?
No, it was a decision approved of the splitting up of the three parcels.
So the plan is recorded, and certainly you've noted where the plan is recorded in your application. And I did locate that in 2006, the planning board decision from 2005 was recorded?
Yes.
And, but I don't see, and I'm looking at the registry of deeds right now?
Yes.
Unless it was recorded at, under a different name?
No, it wouldn't be...
The decision from 2008. I'm going to say right now I would like to see the decision from 2008.
Sure.
Before I, I would want to make a decision on it, and then...
Yep.
You know, aside from that, there's an effectiveness issue about recording or not recording the special permit. Mr. Bellata, you have a lot of transactions on record at the registry of deeds.
Well, we've done a few things over the...
Safe to say that Chair would like a...
I think so.
Continuance?
I would. So it's late, and it is something that I would like to look at and take my time to look at before we have a decision.
Sure.
Can you make sure that you submit that special permit decision from 2008? And I know I'm asking you to submit something to the city that the city generated, but it'll just make it easier.
Okay, yeah, I actually have a copy of that at home.
Okay. So if you can make sure that we have a copy of that, I'd like to make sure I read through it before we move forward. And I think I would like to not close the hearing, but continue the hearing because of that. At this point, am I right, Ms. Mata, in counting? Do we have any further matters on for October than what is before us? So no more from tonight? So I think we have room to accommodate you at the next hearing, in, the next meeting in October, and that date is October 10. But please do, in the next couple days, get that decision to us.
Okay. So you're just looking for the 2008 decision, and the, actually, I can, I thought I had it, the paperwork that was signed off from the planning board.
Yeah, that's what I would want you to submit between now and then.
No problem.
We always have other questions.
Yes, all good.
So, does any board member want to make any other request? Any other requests from, okay. So I'm going to have you sign an extension agreement. The extension agreement will state that all of the deadlines are extended to November, but we're going to hopefully have a meeting again in October.
Okay.
Okay? Just to make sure. If one of you could approach?
Sure.
I think the owner...
See, you've been busy. You've been busy, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen you put up a couple of nice ones.
No, it's been fun.
You did those ones between Pearl Hill and, on like, what is that, Franklin, whatever?
Thank you.
Or it's not Franklin.
Fisher. We did the three up there.
Yeah.
You've been busy too. Townsend, now you're over in Westman's there?
Yeah. Yeah, thankfully.
That being done, I'm looking for a motion from the board on a continuance?
Motion on ZBA 2023-23 for David Bellata, that property known as Zero Gale Street, for a continuance until October 10, 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See ya.
All right. The next matter before this board is ZBA 2324, Rafael Borges at 100 Clarendon Street. This is a request for a dimensional variance under section 181.93 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to reduce the lot area in frontage, front, side, and rear setbacks on a 6,300-square-foot lot with less than minimum requirements to erect a three-family dwelling pursuant to section 181.416, located in residential C. Sir, welcome. Could you please state your name and city of residence for Ms. Mata?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. My name is Greg Roy with Dulles &amp; Roy Civil Design Group, and my office is out of Lunenburg, Massachusetts. I also live there. And I am representing the applicant this evening. I know that it's been a long meeting for you folks, so I'm going to try to be as brief as I possibly can. As you stated, the application is at 100 Clarendon Street. The property is located in the Residence C District. The applicant is looking to, and the size of the property is 6,300 square feet, it has 90 feet of frontage. In the Residence C zoning district, single-family residential dwellings are allowed on lots of greater than 5,000 square feet. So there is the adequate area for a single-family residence. The applicant is proposing to construct a three-family residence on the property, and the requirement in your, in your, in the, excuse me, pardon me if I say bylaw night.
That's okay.
In your ordinance...
No ordinance.
In your ordinance requires 7,500 square feet for a quote "non-single-family," so anything more than a single-family, the ordinance requires 7,500 square feet. We talked to Mark Barbador about this, pre-filing, and the, it was very clear even to us prior to talking with Mark, but Mark confirmed that we needed to be before, the only option forward for a three-family dwelling was a variance, a dimensional variance from your ordinance. The property has historically been used as a multifamily residence. There was a fire a number of years ago, so I do not have evidence to support, to support this to you, but the lot has been purported to us to have had a four-family dwelling on it in the past. I will be forthright with the board, that has happened outside of the two-year window that would, that we would, where we would be able to come before you for a special permit or otherwise approval from the building commissioner to reinstate that non-conforming, non-conforming use. But I did want, I did think that was material to your deliberations this evening. We're not asking you for the creation of a new lot and a, and a new three-family on a new, on a, a nonconformist that hasn't already existed in the past. However, we do understand that you have some mandatory findings to make under your, under the variance criteria. I do, it is regrettable that we included some language in our response to, to the question over hardship relative to lot shape, topography, structure, and a missing one. So I'd like to, I'd like, thank you, soils, I'd like to amend that, if I may. We're really here this evening, in addition, we dare come before you this evening under the lot shape argument for hardship, particularly given the fact that this lot has had a historical multifamily dwelling on it. So we're not asking the board, in our view, to approve something that would otherwise, that, we're asking you to approve something that actually has existed in the past. The applicant has taken strides and has submitted some detailed architectural plans. They do intend to build a townhouse-style building, three garages on the site with a, you know, with upper levels for living, and they've taken, they've done quite a bit of work to put together a plan that they feel is aesthetically pleasing, will provide value to the neighborhood. So I wanted to leave it at that. I am certain that you folks may have some questions. I did also just want to leave the board with the fact that we do understand that if we were successful with your board, which I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but if we were, we do understand we would have to go to planning board. We just knew that the variance was, was the first stop, if you will, because we knew we had some explaining to do, for lack of a better word. So I'm happy to take any questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it. I do not see any other person online. Does anyone here today wish to make a comment on for or against this petition?
Pardon me?
Seeing none, I am going to move on to any board questions or comments to the petitioner. Petitioners represented.
So it's, is the, is the plan to hold it or are they going to sell it? They look like condos.
Yeah, the plan is, I actually, there is a representative from the applicant here, it's not a Mr. Borges, but his partner, and they do intend to hold it for rentals, not to condoize it at this point.
That's my only question.
Mr. Byrne? Any questions or comments?
Comments? Hmm, I'll wait till we close, but it's awful, it's packed awful tight.
Mr. Reynolds?
Packed way too tight.
Any questions or comments?
Let me ask this gentleman a question.
Of course, Mr. Byrne.
The lot right now is fenced off, and it says, there's a sign on it that says rental space, is that, what's it say, Mike?
That may be.
Space for rent?
Some signs with regards to...
Parking year only for tenant or rental...
Rental spots? Maybe at some point the...
Yeah, I'm not sure. To be quite honest with you, I'm not sure. I apologize. I know it's a paved lot primarily today. I'm not sure the history on when the building, the structure burnt, but I know it's been quite some time.
Then we're talking same lot. Okay, fine, no problem.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Christine. To sort of drill down a little bit more on that question, what is the lot currently being used for?
It's a paved lot, as you said, it's fenced. I think it's just used for parking, if I'm correct. Other than that, other than the historical residential use, that's what it's being used for today.
It's like, I can take the big way, park something like that much.
So parking for budding properties? And is it used more in the wintertime with parking bans?
I do not know the answer to that question. I could certainly find it for you, though.
No? Okay. Yeah, no further questions, Christine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you. How long have you owned the property?
I have a deed here for you, sir. Hang on one second, let me pull it up.
Okay.
They're in the package.
Purchased 2018, it looks like.
Does he own any budding properties?
Not that I'm aware of. Does Rafael own budding properties?
What?
Does Rafael own any budding properties?
I don't.
Not that I'm aware of, but I could, I don't have that answer. Well, we have a butters, hold on, we have butters on here. The immediate butter on one side is Cody, the immediate butter on the other side is Souza, the immediate butter in the back is LeBlanc, kitty corner is Alkin.
So the, the butter is Roger Cody?
Scott Cody, it says. Now or formerly, as of the time we prepared this plan, that was, that was our record.
Was it known as Roger Cody?
It was Scott. We're listening to it as Scott M. Cody.
Okay.
At the one immediately to the left, I'm not sure that address, but, and then the one on the other side, opposite that is, sorry, I have a reduced size, LaCelia B. de Souza, and then in the rear is Victor H. LeBlanc, and then there's a few kitty corner. There's a Jada Realty LLC, that's the only business entity, it appears, so I'm not sure what the ownership of that would be, sir, but I don't believe, to my knowledge, he does not own any budding properties. Certainly none that have a common, it doesn't appear that he would own any that have a common lot line.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, could I add one other point?
You may.
I don't believe we need any zoning relief from your board relative to setbacks. I believe we meet the side, rear, and front yard setbacks for the -- in the district.
So the side is 10 feet, the front is 20, and the rear is 20. Or at least you've stated that on your plan.
Right. So perhaps the rear, but I think we meet the sides and the front.
Okay. So the rear, I think you have--
It's a discrepancy in our plan. We say 10 in the plan view, and we say 20 in the table, so I apologize for that one.
All right.
I don't have a copy of the zoning ordinance. Let me check.
So my main question to you is, what is the hardship that is created by the shape?
Yeah, understood. And I -- we're here before you to appeal on the basis of a lot shape hardship. And I understand that's a little bit of a non-traditional argument, probably not one that you're used to seeing, and certainly not one that I'm used to making, to be quite frank with you. But we are -- the fact of the matter is, we have a situation where we have a conforming lot for a single-family dwelling that could be built as of right. So there will be a building there. The applicant doesn't intend to build a structure at the property. We're frankly 1,200 square feet short of the requirement for a multifamily structure. Again, we're not proposing -- this isn't a lot that was just created. It's been there for a long time, and it's a lot that's historically had a multifamily structure on it. So our appeal to your board, and I understand the findings that you need to make, but our appeal is a hardship based on lot shape, given that we're 1,200 square feet short with the testimony and the fact that there has been, in this case, a lot that's existed for a long time that has had a previously erected multifamily structure on it.
Thank you, sir. If there are no other questions or comments, are board members inclined to close the hearing? Okay. Then I'd look for -- I think in this case, I'm going to look for a vote to close the public hearing. Can we have a motion to that?
I had one question. Didn't we just look at a multifamily, and Mark said there was a requirement for more square footage per unit?
There -- that's when we get to four.
Ah, okay. So that's why I can't find it. All right.
Yeah, it adds, I think, 2,500 square feet per unit.
Right, because that's kind of like that will totally just be scaled the wrong way.
Right.
All right. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion?
Make a motion. We close the voting meeting.
I'm going to make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Are you in favor of it?
Absolutely.
All right. Seeing none opposed, the public hearing is closed. And we're going to go to deliberations. I will say on this plan, I just -- I want to start out by saying that this was a well-drawn-out plan, that this was a very professionally-prepared plan, and that I appreciate the work that the applicant and the gentleman before us went through in order to produce the plan. And -- but that in this case, we are bound, not even by ordinance, but by state statute, to conform to the variance criteria, which are that there has to be a hardship related to the soil shape, topography, or structure. Where it is possible to build a single-family home by right on this lot, I do not, even if there is an issue related to the lot, I do not understand what the hardship would be. It's an empty lot. It is certainly in a neighborhood where there are more multifamily dwellings than single-family dwellings, but there are single-family dwellings in the neighborhood as well. Even if setback relief is needed for some reason to construct the single-family dwelling, we have the infill lot provisions available, which I looked at to see if maybe that could provide an avenue of relief to construct a multifamily dwelling, but it does not. It is for a single-family only. At the same time, it does provide an avenue of relief so that petitioner can construct a dwelling on there. They can make use of the lot. And so I don't see that that hardship criteria has been met, and I personally would not, as one board member, be in favor of granting the variance for that reason. I am sorry, the project is not on a lot that supports what the design is, because I certainly do, in general, understand the need for housing and creating housing that people can live in and afford, the same time that is a very heavily occupied neighborhood with a lot of parking demand, and certainly would be adding to it. Does any other board member wish to make a comment, or just wait?
I echo yours. I echo yours. I'm not going to order a three-family area.
Okay. Mr. Chartrand, any comment?
No, no comment.
Mr. Reynolds?
No comment.
Mr. Gallagher?
No comment. Thank you, Christine.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Would it be uncommon for me to have no comment?
It would, but you're allowed to do that. We can take uncommon actions sometimes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Great presentation. You know, with regards to area, it doesn't even meet for a two-family, never mind a three. It's a perfectly rectangle lot. So again, it doesn't meet the criteria for soil shape or topography. There's no final financial hardship. The lot was purchased for about $15,000. I know it's hard for people to come before the city to say, "I have a piece of land that's surrounded by two and three families and single families, so that's what should be there now." But we've demonstrated that in the past, over the years, examples on Plymouth Street and on Elm Street, where we have taken these old, small lots that were -- there were originally multifamily triple-decker units that got removed because of blight, and single-family homes have built, and it's changed the neighborhood. And I don't think it's good for the growth of Pittsburgh to -- we are a dense city, and I don't think it's good to replace density with density. So I wouldn't be in favor of this. Thank you for--
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that said, I am going to look for a motion in the affirmative on the application.
I'll make that motion under ZBA 2023-24 for the application from Rafael Borges for 100 Clarendon Street for a request of a variance under 18133.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Unanimously denied. So that is denied. Again, I do very much appreciate the presentation and the work that you put into it. I look forward to other presentations from you before our board with the same diligence.
Thank you.
And to the property owner, I am sorry that we were not able to offer relief. I hope you do go forward with the project there, and I wish you the best of luck with it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is--
So the next matter before us is ZBA 2022-17. This is Jeffrey Summers, 69 High Street. This is a continued review of the special permit under section 181.94 and 181.77 to operate a sober house pursuant to 181.313A5, which is lodging house definition within a reasonable accommodation in accordance under the Fair Housing Act located in residential C. Mr. Summers, welcome back to the meeting.
Good evening.
I did want to be sure, because I know that we did have a meeting, the last meeting, that you were not present for, that had you received a copy of the minutes, and I know, and I will tell you again, because of my many time constraints, the minutes did get submitted very recently.
Yeah, no question.
Okay. Okay. So I do want to make sure you have a copy of the minutes.
From the last meeting?
Yes. Yes, that you were not at. So because I want you to have knowledge of what went on at the last meeting, and--
The one where you -- it was--
That was the one that was scheduled for 6 o'clock.
That was the only one scheduled?
And that we had an executive session for after, and that you came 45 minutes, it's about 6:45, when we were in the middle of executive session on another matter.
Okay.
So the hearing was held and the review was continued, okay? And none of the conditions were changed, except that the review date was changed to today. We did, however, have testimony from the city solicitor, the building commissioner, and attorney Pollock on an update just as the various things that have been going on. I know you have appealed this decision. I wanted to--
You had testimony from them prior to my arrival or after my arrival?
We had testimony from them during the hearing that was scheduled in open session. There is recorded in the minutes. It is available for you to see.
Okay. Do you -- I--
I'm sorry. I need to get through a few preliminaries, and I will definitely allow you a chance to speak, sir. One of the questions that was asked of the law department at the last meeting was whether there was a stay in place in the appeal, and the answer was that there was not. To make sure that I understood the current status today, I did go and look at the court docket online, and I saw that after that meeting, you had made a motion to the Superior Court asking to prevent any inspections from the city, I believe, and that the court had denied that. Is there any other update you would offer on the appeal litigation?
On the initial appeal?
The appeal to Superior Court.
Well, I know that there is a October, I think it's third, court date that's coming up.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So the general gist of the statements from the city solicitor was that there was a motion to dismiss the appeal that had been submitted but had not yet been heard, and I believe that's the October hearing.
Correct.
So the appeal is still pending, but that, again, the appeal did not create a stay. The testimony from attorney Pollock was reviewing the actions that had taken place in the housing court, and that was prior to this decision issuing on a contempt order that I think remains outstanding. I did look at that docket, and I saw that you had filed a notice of appeal in that case as well, but I was unable to find any docketed appeal in the appeals court docket. Is the appeal proceeding in that case?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And attorney Pollock stated that the fine in that case was $11,650, that there was attorney's fees under that order of $7,125, and that there was a continuing fine of $50 a day. And then there was an order for reduction of occupants. And I had reported that that had not been complied with. Would you agree with those statements? Is that the status?
I would not.
Okay. And I think I'm going to move to Commissioner Barbadoro, and then I'm going to allow you to respond to all of the statements. So Commissioner Barbadoro's statements was that no inspections had occurred since the ZBA decision that we had issued, which has a condition for annual, I think, fire and health, and that there was an $8,000 fine to the building department, which had not been paid. And would you disagree with those statements?
I'm sorry?
Would you disagree with those statements or agree with those statements as to status?
I would disagree with that.
Okay. All right. So I think that fully apprises you of what had happened at the last meeting. But again, the minutes will be available to you to review. So can you go ahead and--
Have the minutes completed? Have the minutes been recorded? Are they ready?
Okay. But, yeah. So they'll be avail -- I'll -- we'll make sure they're available to you. Why don't you go ahead and make a response and tell us either, or review your responses to any of that testimony, and anything you'd like to review regarding the special permit?
So since I last came in on July 12 of 2022, when you made your decision, I came back to the building department. I was coming on a monthly basis to get those minutes, the same minutes that you're talking about now, and the filing was never made. It was -- it is supposed to be made within 90 days, and for some reason, you guys did it in seven months, which automatically creates -- means that my request is granted. That is what the law reads. That is why I brought it to Superior Court. You have 90 days to file your decision with the clerk and have it stamped. You had it stamped seven months later. Can I ask you why it took you so long to record that decision?
No.
You don't know why? Or I can't ask?
I'm not going to respond to that question.
You don't have an answer?
Please go ahead and continue your statement.
Okay. So that's why I filed my appeal, and we'll proceed with the appeal in October. We'll see what happens then. But as far as a $8,000 fine, I'm not familiar with that, and I don't agree with that. And everything else I have complied with and did whatever you have asked, and this has been, what, a two-year, three-year process now? And I don't know what else you would like to know, but I'll answer any other questions that you have.
Okay. I'm going to go through the special permit conditions, and you're welcome to say you've complied, you've not complied, or make any other comments you like on them.
Okay.
Occupancies shall be limited to 12 persons to create a living environment of one person per bedroom, defined as one room with a closet which is not accessible only through another bedroom. Petitioner may seek to-- Petitioner may seek to increase the number of persons if, by modification of the special permit, if petitioner creates more bedrooms on the premises with such property modifications to be properly permitted and constructed in accordance with all municipal, state, and federal law. Would you like to make a response to that?
Yes, I would. So, that condition that you made was unreasonable and illegal, and this, this 69 High Street has been either a group home, convalescent home, or nursing home for more than 65 years. And I have documented proof of that, that I handed into you, and in that time, it was always double occupancy. And so, I find it illegal, discriminatory, and maybe even racist that you put this condition on me, and that's why I have not complied, and I think the court would agree with me. And you have no basis to have put that condition in.
The next condition is that the kitchen be upgraded to commercial standard, which is generally defined as the installation of kitchen appliances in good working order, which are sufficient in size and number to service the residents on the premises, and of durable quality such as those intended for use in a commercial application. Would you like to make a response?
Yes. So, you put a condition in that I have a commercial kitchen, and those were the exact words in the ruling. A commercial kitchen would consist of a three-bay sink, a grease trap, and a commercial stove and an ansel system. I come from a background of previously owned in a bar and restaurant, and that's what a commercial kitchen is. So, the fact that you put this condition on me, when this place, again, has existed for 65 years in this same condition, and it's residential, I did not do it. I found the condition to be unreasonable, illegal, and racist.
Number three is that renovations to be completed within 12 months from the date of this decision. Any response?
I have done some renovations, but the race, the conditions that I found to be illegal and racist, I did not complete.
Number four, applicants outstanding fines are to be paid within 12 months from the date of this decision. Any response?
I don't believe that I owe any fines, and any fines that are legal and justified, I will pay immediately.
Number five is applicant shall reduce the number of occupants to no more than 12 persons unless a modification is granted within 12 months from the date of this decision. Any response?
Yes. Because you did not have the agreement certified with the city clerk within 90 days, my application for a 22-person occupancy is automatically granted, and that's what the court stated.
You have documentation that the court stated?
I have, well, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The court did not state that. Mass General Law states that, and I do have that documentation.
Did you follow the procedure with regards to the constructive grant?
Yes, sir, I did.
Did you file with the city?
Yes, sir, I did.
Do you have documentation of that?
This is certainly part of the litigated issue, so I don't really want, this is, this is part of the court's issue. The court will decide the issue. However, if you would like, the succinct answer is that the applicant has a limited period in time in which to file a constructive grant, which was not met.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
The next provision was that building health and, so it is building as well, building, health, and fire department inspections shall be completed annually as a condition of the continuation of this special permit. That is condition number seven, because number six is the review date. Any response you would like to make on that condition?
Yes. So, we initially had this zoning board hearing on July 12th of 2022, and after that, two inspections were performed, and I had no problem with that. But after the court case started, I didn't feel like there was a legitimate reason for you guys to have another inspection, to make a third inspection within a year, and so we did not have that inspection.
Which departments were involved in the inspections that occurred?
Fire, building, electrical, plumbing.
So, two separate events, but they all came at the same time?
They came together on two different occasions, yes.
And then the sunset clause, upon the transfer or sale of the business from Jeffrey Summers, Jeffrey's House, I assume that one of those, either yourself or the entity, is still the owner?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't hear you.
Are either you or Jeffrey's House, Inc., still the owner of the property operating the program?
Yes.
Okay. So, the sunset clause is not invoked. Okay. All right. I'm going to see if there's any public comment at this time. Does any other person wish to? Sir, you're welcome. Please come to the podium if you can state your name and your city of residence for Ms. Mata for the minutes, and then you're welcome to make a statement, sir.
David Barra.
Mm-hmm.
Did you say city of residence? Pittsburgh, Massachusetts.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
I was at Jeffrey's House when he lived on, I lived at the Garnett Street House right before it was closed, and then I moved to the High Street House after being at a hotel for a week. As far as the number two issue that you brought up, you're, I've been at sober houses, all in programs all over the state, and you're holding a higher standard than any other city in Massachusetts. Every, every place I've been at, it's a shared room. I mean, it'd be great to have a single room. It'd be nice and stuff, but it's a little bit unreasonable. I mean, every other city in town in this state is okay with shared rooms, and that's how sober houses and halfway house programs work. So, it just seems very unreasonable. I've been all over the state in places, even been at, I was at a house in Southbridge, and they didn't even care. That place didn't even have fire sprinklers. But, and as far as the kitchen goes, I don't know why you need a commercial kitchen. And again, every other program I've been in does not have a commercial kitchen set up. It's just a normal kitchen with, you know, an oven, fridge, a couple fridges and freezers, and working toasters and stuff like that. Maybe, I think maybe one that I was at might have had a commercial kitchen. I think maybe that was a house in, the answer house in South Boston, I think.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess that's all I have to say on that. It's just every other, every program I've been to, it's, it's, it's shared rooms, and people, it'd be great to have better privacy, but that's, I think that also gives you more incentive to try to save money and move out to another place and better your life, and having that little bit of uncomfortableness, sharing a room, it gives you a little incentive to not try to stay there for the next five years and, you know, try to use it as a stepping stone to moving on to your own place and a better life.
Mm-hmm.
That's about it.
Thank you very much for your statement.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And just good luck with your journey. All right. There is, I believe, no person online, so I will move to see if any board member wishes to ask a question of the permit holder. Mr. Reynolds?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Chartrand?
No, I don't think I have any questions for you, Jeff. You've explained yourself.
Mr. Burns?
Jeffrey, how much of the conditions here are in the courts right now?
I would like for you to clarify your question a little more.
Like, you said the stuff like, the occupancy, you know, wasn't, you didn't think it was right, so that must be in the courts right now, right? Because you said something was already settled in the court that said that we were wrong. Then you corrected yourself, and you said, no, it's the state law that's wrong.
Yes, I did say that.
Okay. I'm just confused on what, in October, are we going to find out?
Well, that's why we have a date.
Yeah, but what are we finding out? What's the, what's the case?
The motion that's up for hearing in October is the city's motion to dismiss the appeal, which is a preliminary motion before it gets to the substantive...
I could explain it to you a little better if you'd like.
And it's, the motion states that because the time deadlines weren't complied with, it should be dismissed. The court will decide that issue.
All right. So, really, there's not much here to decide on what's either approve or disapprove this review, that's it?
There's, we're here to approve or disapprove or continue the review.
Okay.
Really, that's all that's before us.
All right, okay.
Mr. Gallagher?
No, no questions.
Mr. McLaughlin, any questions? Oh, he said no. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Would it be out of line for me to make a motion that we continue this meeting until November so that we can at least get the reading of what the courts have to say? And then we can make some decisions with that, because we have to continue it, because we can't make a decision on anything tonight. Everything's in the air.
We can, but there are other things that may interfere with whatever decision we make. So, we're not stayed, there's no court order that prevents us from acting, but there is something happening in the courts that might affect what happens, right? So, it's a judgment call on, on continuing until after that hearing.
Well, then, I make the motion, and nobody seconds it, I don't care.
Why don't you make the motion? The October date is October the 10th.
When is the court date?
We're on November.
Oh, sorry, November 14th.
Okay. They can figure out what I want to figure out.
To continue?
Let's have some deliberation on this motion.
Okay. Okay, I make a motion to continue this meeting until November 14th.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's have discussion on the motion. You know, for me, this is, there's a court hearing that may or may not wipe clear the issue of whether or not there's a pending appeal of this, of this decision, that it does to me make sense to wait for, especially since it's scheduled so soon, unless there is any kind of exigency, any kind of health and safety issue that is so important that we need to address it beforehand.
So, your recommendation is continuance?
I, we haven't had anybody appear to make any statement that there's an exigency. We have ongoing things that have been pending for a long time here, the inspections, the fines. We also have a city ordinance that allows boards to revoke or suspend permits in the face of unpaid fines, but I don't know that any of that is an exigency. All of the deadlines in, yeah, and you, and we can differ in opinion on that. I think all of the factors that are going on here, if we didn't have a motion pending on October the 4th, there might be no reason at all for a continuance. There might be no reason at all. But there are 12-month deadlines in here which should be taken from the date that the decision was filed with the city clerk's office, and we are not at the 12-month deadline given that basis right now. So, there's still an opportunity for the permit holder to comply, although I acknowledge he has reiterated that the constraints are illegal, and I think that can be taken as an intent not to comply, so.
Okay. So, the applicant has commented that basically, in almost every condition, he has no intent to comply to the board's conditions.
Well, at this time, because the courts haven't decided.
At this time.
The court, so let me say, the court would only decide if the action would be dismissed on that time deadline basis. It would not reach the substantive appeal of whether any of these conditions are correct or not.
Right.
For a long time.
Right.
For a long time. So, that I, you know, so, and that's kind of...
With today's litigation on television and everything, when you say appeal, usually it's gone to a, one court first, then the appeals to the second, or is that just the name of the document, the appeal of?
The appeal of, so the first appeal...
So, it's not an appeal from another, a lower court?
No, no. The appeal from this ZBA's decision is to the Superior Court, yeah.
Not as dumb as I would.
So, so you said that...
Because we're in the middle of deliberations, I'm going to continue to ask the board members, does anybody else want to continue on deliberations?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor of continuance.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
I don't think we'll get anything resolved today.
Okay.
Well, you're second to my, to my...
So, we're, we're at the point where I think we've deliberated, unless we'd like any more discussion.
No, I just need to know, are we voting, or...
We're going to vote then. So, there's a motion to continue to the November 14th meeting that has been seconded, so we're going to take a vote. We have one, two, three, four, five full board members, and so I'm going to ask for a vote, all those in favor of a continuance to November the 14th.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
One.
One, four to one, the motion carries, continue to November the 14th. Okay. And that's the end of the hearing. We're going to move now to the last matter on the agenda.
Good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay. Sir, what is your name?
Jim Reynolds.
Jim Reynolds. Can you spell your last name?
I sure can. Harvey Y. and Laura D. S.
Oh, that's Jim. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Jim.
That is not...
Where did my agenda go?
Keep doing good things.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
I'm going to consume them all this evening.
Okay.
The next matter is ZBA 2020-21. This is Zero Pearl Hill Park, 177 Etonian Park. This is a little unusual. We had a variance that was granted on November 10th, 2021, and... And it was for construction of a single-family home. The issue was dimensional frontage. On February 8th, 2022, we granted the six-month extension to June 7, 2022. And the, um, the permit holder did not apply for a building permit until March of 2023, which was eight months after the expiration date, to have exercised the variance or have it lapse. What is before us is a question of whether the board can make a finding that either the variance has been exercised or that the applicant has been equitably told, which means there has been a very, very, very good reason that has made it impossible for them to proceed with the construction of the property and the obtaining of a permit. And just so, um, we all have the court's language on this. If it was exercised, that means the applicant must take steps necessary to achieve the purpose for which it was granted or must substantially change his position in reliance thereon. And equitable tolling means that, um, delays clearly attributable to others have hampered the holders of efforts to obtain a building permit. So let me be clear that if a building permit had been obtained, the, the variance has been recorded, it would be fine. We need to find whether or not it's been exercised or there's been some delay. I see no one before me, so I assume that the petitioner has not come.
Yes, uh, he has.
Okay. And he's sent a communication asking us to push it back to October so he can attend in person. There's no deadlines before us and nothing to delay us from doing that, but we are now at 10, 11 for October?
Did you say this is ZBA 2020, though?
Yes, so starting off...
So he wants an extension after three years?
Yep.
Okay.
So we all received in our packets the things that they've done. I assume everybody's been on to the property. There was a well installed. There was a well permit hold.
When?
Of course, you ask me these questions.
Well, because water was a big issue up there in deciding.
Here.
Did the building commissioner kick this to us?
Yeah, August 24th, 2022. I think the building commissioner is generally inclined that it's not been exercised. This is a single-family home and...
So we gave him an extension. He missed, he didn't exercise in the prescribed time. Prior to that expiration, we granted it an extension until 6/7/22.
Yep.
And nothing was exercised until after that.
The, the permit for the well installation was issued on August 24th, 2022, which is after the expiration.
Were allowed how many extensions?
The statute is unclear, but it is clear that they must be requested before they expire.
I would venture to say that I don't see the application for a well as exercising that permit. Because you could apply for a well for any reason and, and maybe not for a single-family home. You know, sprinklers to grow the grass on that vacant lot. But it's also a variance from our regular rules. So to me, that means you're going to move on that. You're going to, you know, we're giving you special permission and you're going to do it.
I would like to grant relief, but doesn't, I don't think this is a relief question. I think it's a procedure and timeline question and it's either been met or not met.
Right.
It's, to me, it's a fact-finding, it's a fact-finding.
Ask the date, it's, unfortunately, we're in a different place.
I would, I would prefer not to make this applicant come back before us. The only, without him here, I certainly can't speak to the timeline of what happened. I can say that I visited the site, that the, at least as of the present, there's been a road down cleared, there's a clearing at the bottom, there's a fill in there. There's been some steps taken.
Did he drop the well?
The, I believe the well is installed. But the permit wasn't pulled until August 24th of '22.
So if we continue another one, we can't be issued a permit for anything until we make a determination, what's, what's...
So he's requesting a delay to October. He's not going to receive any permit until either we make a finding in his favor or he re-appeals for a variance.
Okay, we're booked for October, right? How many? That's it? Okay.
But still, he's asking for an extension of an expired permit.
He's asking us to find that he exercised the permit and therefore it doesn't lapse. Once you exercise it, it doesn't lapse anymore. The building permit, which he doesn't have yet, has two years on it.
Right, but he doesn't have it.
So in order to help the applicant, because what we don't want to do is delay if he's going to reapply, is, do we have the facts tonight? I mean, is there any documentation that we're missing?
We don't know. We don't, we didn't miss anything. Everything's here.
Because it all has to go through the building department, right?
But we don't know what other stuff he may have.
That's what we're looking at, what is here tonight?
I only have the packet that everyone was sent for this meeting. We have the zoning determination in 2016, another one in 2019, special permit for a common driveway in 2002.
What's the question before us?
The original...
Is whether his permit has expired.
I think we should res...
Because it hasn't been acted on.
Yeah.
So the question is, has it been acted on?
Question is, has it been exercised?
How do we determine if it's been acted on?
If there was action taken.
Go ahead.
What is, examples of action?
Building permits, usually that, that action, he applied for a well permit after the expiration of the permit to try to prove that he stayed, but...
Okay.
Christine?
Are we in deliberation? Because there's...
I know.
...obvious...
Mr. Gallagher?
Is this where we're at?
Yes, thank you. To be fair, I'd really like to hear his side of the story.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I don't...
During that time period, I, I just would like to hear why, what the delay was about.
Okay.
I don't see the problem in finding, there is no action.
Okay.
And then creating clarity, that would create clarity.
Right.
I think the best thing to do then, since our board is of differing opinions on a continuance, I think, because it would be helpful to have an applicant that's not going to be successful just be able to move forward. It would be helpful to making a determination, to hear directly from the applicant. And I think your point was, it doesn't seem like it's been exercised, we might as well move forward.
Which would then give the applicant the opportunity to go and apply and make it clear.
So let's resolve this by having a motion to continue heard, offered first and then if not, a motion on the finding.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue ZBA 2020-21 until October...
10.
October 10, 2023.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of a continuance?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Aye, okay. So the motion for the continuance has failed. Can we have a motion on the finding in the affirmative? So can somebody make, agree that we're to make a motion to find that the permit holder has either exercised or...
Madam, I'm going to amend. I'd like to deliberate a little bit. We've got a motion, right?
We had, so we had a motion to continue that was voted on. The next motion will be on approval of the, or disapproval of the proposed finding.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to understand that if the definition of substantially starting a project is typically defined by a permitting process, do we have that information tonight from all departments as far as what has been exercised and what hasn't? Because if we already have the information tonight and we delay, what's going to change? Are we just delaying the inevitable that the applicant has to reapply?
The, it's an excellent point. The question is whether there are activities outside of the permitting process, which is before you in your packet, outside of that which would constitute substantial exercise.
Activities such as?
Such as, uh, logging, building a building. The classic example is, that is given, which isn't unfortunately applicable here, is if you had a variance to subdivide a lot and you had conveyed the lot away. There, you know, it's just not a lot of case law to offer you on this issue nor a lot of clarity in the statute. The statement that I read is the general description that I can give you.
What does, what does our bylaw state? Or our rules and regs specifically?
I can tell you what our bylaw, which is where this would lie, states. And by bylaw, I really mean ordinance. "Any rights authorized by a variance which are not exercised within one year from the, not exercised within one year from the date of grant of such variance shall lapse and may be reestablished only after notice in a new hearing pursuant to this section." In other words, a new variance application. "Except that the board, in its discretion and upon written application by the grantee of the right in a variance, may extend the time for exercise of such rights for a period not to exceed an additional six months if the grantee applies for the extension prior to the expiration of the one-year period."
Okay. So he asked for the six months, we're allowed to extend for six months, and he didn't exercise in six months?
Correct. Well, that's the finding, he didn't exercise them in six months. He definitely did not pull a building permit within six months.
I'm good with my vote, thanks for the clarification.
All right. So can I have a motion in the affirmative for a finding that the applicant has exercised his rights under the variance prior to expiration?
I'll make that motion under ZBA 20... 20-21.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that finding is unanimously rejected and the applicant will need to reapproach us for a variance.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Not until we discuss the very last matter on the agenda, which is review of our rules and regulations. It is now past 10:00. So I don't think we're going to go anywhere on this, but I did want to talk about it briefly. Number one, I think we should all take a look at the rules and regs because they have not been amended in a long time and see if there's anything we want to improve in them. Second, there is a specific improvement that I would like to have us consider more substantively at the next meeting and that I swear I printed out for you. It is to add a provision which allows the board to, uh, request a, or impose a fee upon an applicant in order to hire its own independent consultant. We are fully able to do this as long as that provision is in our regs so that if we get a complex application before us, we can require an applicant to pay for a consultant. It's something that's allowed by statute with certain restrictions. And what I did is create a new Section 6A in our rules and regs and just insert the language of that statute. I then printed it out for everybody and promptly left it in the printer at my office. So I will have, ask Ms. Mata to circulate that to everybody.
Thursday? We're meeting Thursday, correct?
Yeah, but I don't know that we have OML time to add that to the agenda.
Well, at least if we have it, the paper copy, so we can kind of thumb through it.
Yeah. It's just something that will allow us leeway to have access to that kind of expertise when we need it. I think it would be an appropriate thing.
Look forward to it.
No, that'd be great.
It's a good tool.
Okay. Other than that, I wonder if we have somebody who wants to have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
I'd like to everybody, I'd like to have everybody think, just think about some ways to lighten the load on reviews. Because we review and review and review and review. And, and there has to be a way around this. Either we have to get it so that we can take a permit away. I mean, we, we can issue a permit for, and I'm just saying, for a six-month period of time, right? Person runs the business, has to fill its conditions between, before he gets a, uh...
Certificate of occupancy?
Certificate of, you know...
What's, what's the hit rate, Ben?
There has to be a way because we just keep going over it, going over it, you know?
Agreed. What's the hit rate, Ben, on the reviews? Good, bad?
As far as meeting, um...
Well, so what's the effectiveness of reviews and reviews and reviews? Has it been effective?
So I would say that every time we have a review, this person that comes before us looking for, and, you know, really doesn't meet the time deadlines if that's what we're looking for. Every applicant seems to exceed a timeline that we give them. Even, you know, when the board does what it usually does, which is say to the applicant, "What is a reasonable timeline for you to complete your work?" And we take the applicant's timeline and they still don't meet it. So for time deadline purposes, I don't think it's effective. For hitting the app, and not hitting, having contact with the applicant at a certain point in the project to ensure that before it goes too far astray, something is corrected, that's effective. To ensure actual completion of the conditions, as long as we condition the certificate of occupancy off it, that's effective because at that point in time, as soon as they complete, they want to come back before us so that they can get their certificate of occupancy and complete the project. So one thing to do might be to gear... So one thing to do might be to gear reviews towards, you know, a, a much longer time expanse, rather than having them back so quickly. Another thought that I've had is.
They can always come to us and say, I've completed everything. I want to get going.
We can certainly write into our decisions that the applicant, the, can, the permit holder can request a sooner review date if it can represent that all conditions are completed or for modification. Right? We could also designate every six months. We're gonna have one meeting where we're just gonna review all the special permits that we've granted in six months and see if anybody has a problem that they want to bring the permit holder back in on. That might be something that we can do.
And is this action of the board kind of to supplant enforcement? Because we're saying, is that kind of what the what is?
It could get boiled out.
Well, yeah, it's because conditioning projects for, with no, you know, action, there's no point in having the conditions. You know, if we can't improve, if we can't make them do them, then there's no point in even having them.
Right, but who would enforce that?
We're enforcing it, because some of the stuff is not building code-related.
So if it's not, and if it's not, so I guess then the other question would be, just to challenge ourselves, do we really need all those conditions?
Always a question.
Food for thought. I'm not saying what's right, what's wrong. It's just, I, I, I've, having been on the board before and coming back, am amazed statistically at how many review, continuants and reviews we're doing. It seems, kind of feels like the hamster wheel. And you might say it's necessary, and I don't dispute that at all. But if it's effective, then do it. If it's, if you question the effectiveness of it, take a, you know, think about it.
I think some of it has stemmed from the fact that historically, you know, over the years, there's been non-compliance of the conditions. I, I know I can take you to properties that had lists of conditions 10 or 12 years ago that were never enforced. And, and I think over time, this whole board has seen that, oh, you know, everybody does this in the meeting, and then we go away and nothing, the conditions aren't met. So we're looking at a, you know, we're trying to, as you know, the board can impose reasonable conditions to make sure a project has quality to it. And we're seeing this quality.
Not, not disputing the intent. I'm just asking about the efficacy of it.
I think that we have a very robust zoning bylaw as a whole. It's big. When you go to other communities, maybe it has to be, but having worked in other communities, there, there's a lot of caveats in there on every project. So it kind of makes it hard to not condition them, would be my opinion. There's so many tiny checkmarks to make as you go through for each category. And like we stated before, we don't make these rules. So, but we are to enforce them. So I just think it's kind of difficult sometimes with some of these permits that they, they have a lot of conditions associated with them. A guy like Jeff is gonna get conditions. There's just no way around it.
And Mr. Reynolds, I think it's, we're different, right, in that it's an old city. It's a very congested city. There was a lot of building that predated zoning. So, so many things that we see, so many applications we see are, are unique on their own basis. Whereas go to Townsend, for example, I'll just pick that because I lived in Townsend. Very small epicenter of Townsend is old, but a lot of it was developed, you know, post-war and all that. And it's very uniform, very consistent. And we just seem to have a lot of challenges, and, and it seems every time we see a lot of these cases, as Mr. Chartran brought up, there's just a lot of.
There's so many overlays.
Uniqueness to each application.
They're always constantly aging everything to try to make it better, like creating these overlays. We have tons of overlays. They overlap each other even, on top of each other. You look at someone, they, they qualify under five different overlays. The downtown district, the residential Main Street district, the smart growth district. There's a lot. I mean, when you're trying to look at the zoning to figure it out, it's like, yeah, there's five or six different zones here that overlap this property, you know? But depending on what they apply for, so I think it's, it's tough. It's, um, it's tough. Plus, we have a lot of illegal stuff, too.
I think the biggest challenge, though, is simply this. We put conditions in. The applicants, um, agreed to them, and then we just seem to keep chasing the completeness.
Well, have you ever had an applicant say no to a condition that we put on it? I mean, that, that's just not gonna happen. Even quite frankly, at the point the conditions are put on, the meeting's closed. They can't talk just to talk about, you know, process.
Suggestions on improvement?
Just, just generally, you brought it up because I think what you were saying was, hey, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, there's, well, there's a lot of finicky things associated with that.
Sorry, I wasn't talking to you. You brought it up.
I did.
Yes, you did. You're welcome to answer for him, though.
No, don't.
So why did you bring it up?
Because I see that we kick it down the road all the time. We have to have something in place that stops the conditions. That's one thing that we look for. Because we don't lay on heavy conditions that are not going to make Pittsburgh look better. So we ask the, the client or the applicant, do you agree with these conditions? Yes, okay. And we, then we put them on, on the, but we have no way of forcing him to get him finished. What I'm saying is, let's put something in place that will not impede his income flow or anything, but something that will force him to finish what he agreed to do in order to get a special permit. We're giving him the special permit, but we expect him to, before he gets a certificate of occupancy, to complete the conditions that we put on it. That's what I'm looking for.
So.
And I just wanted everybody to think about it, of a way to do it, so that it makes sense and it fits everybody, so we don't have to keep making exceptions.
I would like to, I would like to stop making exceptions. But the, what I think if we're going to do that is think about what the consequences are that we're going to have take place if we don't make an exception. So is this board gonna start recommending fining, for instance, for violation of the conditions? Or is it going to pull a special permit? If conditions have not been complied with, we can suspend and we can revoke.
But you really can't suspend and revoke, because by the time we get to that particular point, the, the business is already, the house is built, the businesses are, are up and running. And you just can't go in and pull a special permit, especially on a house that's built.
I think you're saying too much equity has been invested at that point. And it's hard to, that's the thing. It would be hard to say, well, you're not friendly. You're not business-friendly, or you're not, you know, that, that, that will be what you're branded if you, if you do go that way.
So then either we're going to rely on the building department to enforce, or we are going to.
I'm pretty sure someone just made a motion.
What did you do? Oh, I'm sorry. We gotta stop this discussion. It's time to go home.
Let me just add this, Christine. Maybe a better punitive approach to this is to look at fining. It gets their attention.
Motion to adjourn and continue discussion Thursday?
Second.
Denied.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.